Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, October 11th, 2022. Please rise for a moment of silence. Love the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson?
Here.
Carmody?
Here.
Fishmine?
Here.
Laffin?
Barone?
Here.
Tatta?
Here.
Testa?
Zandry?
Here.
Chairman Servoni?
Here.
Well, welcome Coalition for a Better Wallingford. Please come visit with us.
Good evening.
If you could.
Ken Welch, the official unofficial president. I'll tell you a little bit about that. So I gotta take 30 seconds just to give you a brief history of my year, which hasn't been good. I got into a bad accident in January and broke my neck and spent the next two months in a hospital. And I'm still in recovery. So as you can imagine, that's sent vibrations through our household as well as the organization. And thank God for people in the organization because they've stepped up and done a lot to keep us going. And I would expect that to continue. But it made me realize that after 10 years of doing this, it's time to move on. So we are actively pursuing new leadership. I'll be involved to answer questions, provide direction, fill in gaps where I can. But that is an active action right now for us. So.
Good luck with that.
Thanks. I'm gonna give you a rundown of the past year's events, and I'm gonna talk as fast as possible because I got something really important to talk about at the end. You'll notice on your desks, we gave you a little package commemorating Red Ribbon Week, and that's what we'll talk about at the end. In particular, the red velvet cupcake I hear is tremendous, and especially for you guys, so enjoy them, all of you. So this past year, with the help of many townwide agencies, we continued our tradition of both organized and impromptu community events. Our open support group led by Jackie McNamee deals for parents of addicts. It's still active. During COVID, they were on Zoom every other week. I believe they're back now to weekly in-person meetings. The bereavement group led by Phyllis Gordon is unfortunately full, and they're asking for more space or other people to help run additions to that. And that's for people who have lost someone, either a drug overdose or some type of traumatic injury. On hold right now is our Smart Recovery Group, which was set up for 18- to 30-year-olds, but we just haven't had the funding to keep that going. So we had to send the counselors home statewide. They are available, but they're not available under counselor stewardship. And we don't believe in that. So until we can afford to pay someone who's trained to oversee that group, that's not gonna happen. Several sporting event, pop-up tent events. We participated in the 350th Plus Two Parade, Project Graduation. This year, we're participating in a statewide mentioned prevention program. So if you're driving down the highway, you'll see billboards all over the state which talk about how to deal with the recently legalized marijuana, among other things. Joint participation in this year's Risk Behavior Survey, which is now managed by Tony Loomis and overseen by the Board of Ed. So we're excited that that got passed on to good hands, and we're excited that it's still happening. So we did miss the COVID years, but that'll be happening every other year. That's the primary generation of information on our community that we use to generate programs. So those are the results from the two high schools. We get virtually 95% participation, so the information is valid. We'd like to see that continue, obviously. We attended 10 Wallingford Garden Market showings, distribution of information and brochures from the SOAR grant and the ADOPS grant in conjunction with the Health Department. Those two grants were used to talk primarily to doctors and hospital people in our community. And there's approximately 60 of them, including dentists and some pediatricians, and some growing evidence that opioids are not being managed the way they should amongst those groups. So that's an important operation that will continue. Fortunately, we had the Health Department's help in landing that second grant, which got us into the doctors' offices. We used our office for a number of things. NARANON groups and meetings, trainings. The Girl Scouts are down there tonight. We hold our monthly meetings down there. You're always welcome to join us. One of the big things that we've done in the past is go to the State House and try to control some of the legislation that's happened. This year, it was all done via Zoom, but with Mary's leadership, we got involved in nine different bills. So we're really looking for that to continue. With the onset of COVID, we found it very difficult to get to people. A lot of people are still dealing with the fear of coming out into public. So we decided to do more billboard advertising than we've ever done in the past. And we landed 12 billboards this year, and you'll see two of them now promoting Red Ribbon Week. We average, according to the billboard company, between 300,000 and 500,000 eyeballs every week with those two billboards. And there's one at either end of town. You've all got a copy of the existing billboard in front of you, and it'll be running on government TV. So everybody'll get a look at it, whether they want to or not. One of the signature events for the last few years prompted by COVID was a program we call What's in the Bag. This year, that expanded to 4,200 packages to over 700 families throughout town. There were six sponsors: YSS, Trail of Terror, the Wallingford Library, the Wallingford Community Women, the Taylor Short Foundation, and SCOW. That event was a six-week program in the middle of the summer. Those packages, along with backpacks, went to the kids going to summer camps. And then we held a family day, which was run by a couple of people and the Taylor Short Foundation and the Trail of Terror. And we had over 300 participants that day down at the linear trail. So it was a really big event, and it put the exclamation point on that event. This past weekend, we were at Celebrate Wallingford. I'm sure most of you were there. There were two harrowing days. They weren't the best days to be out there, especially the first one. But we did it with resilient volunteers. And some of the people from the bereavement group showed up to help run our booth for us. Coming up this weekend, we'll be at the Zion Lutheran Church at the Scarecrow Festival. That's always been a fun event. Now I wanna talk about Red Ribbon Week, which is the primary reason for me coming here. And in front of you, you see a copy of our billboard ad, which is at two ends of town, and a copy of the events for the town. If you don't mind, indulge me a little bit. I'd like to give credit to the people in each of those events.
Yes, go ahead.
So Monday, from 12 to 2, is gonna be the Change the Script Van from the state. It's gonna be there distributing literature to the seniors or anybody else that shows up. On Tuesday, we're having our annual open house at our office at 136 Center Street. And on Wednesday night is the primary Red Ribbon Week community event, which is now being headed up by the Mayor's Council on Substance Abuse and Mandy at YSS. Wallingford Public Schools, the SAD groups, the Health Department, the Police Department will be there. SCOW will be there, and YSS will be there. Instead of being held outside, it's gonna be held here in the chambers because of weather concerns. And it'll be a new flavor. Mandy's worked really hard to get the high schools involved, and they're really taking this thing, you know, and giving it direction and giving it meaning. So I'm looking forward to see what they have to offer. On Thursday night, YSS, along with the library, is sponsoring Hidden in Plain Sight. It's an interesting demonstration. If nobody's ever seen it, it's all about going into a teenager's bedroom and seeing the various ways in which they have illegal substances that will definitely do harm to their brains. And you'll never know it unless you go to this presentation. So it's a half-hour presentation. There's two presentations that night, and you can see it at the library. The weekends on the National Drug Takeback Day at the police station will be part of that. Over the course of the week, if you drive up and down Main Street, you're gonna see red ribbons everywhere, attached to the trees and the poles. It's done by SCOW, just to remind us that it's there. And the YMCA is an annual offering. Their place will be open for anybody in town for free for the entire week. So we do a lot. And you'd think that with all of the time and money that we spend in the promotion and the brochures, that this would be a problem that would go away. But it isn't. For the first five years we were here, we had trouble holding onto volunteers, mostly because our message was a dire message. You know, kids were dying at the time. We were averaging 17 deaths a year in town, and everybody was up in arms because most of those kids were under 30 years old. So we sprang into action. And we got a lot of help and a lot of conversations, and we pressed the flesh a lot, and we turned that around. The five years following that, we had virtually no deaths, isolated instances. But in the last five years, that number has crept up again. We were worried about COVID. And in fact, the COVID, I think the primary COVID influence on these problems has again stabbed us in the back. In 2020-21, there were 13 deaths. I'm sorry, 19 to 2020, 13 deaths. In 2021, there were 14 deaths. There's already been seven this year. Part of this is, like all other reporting data systems, they've gotten really good at finding these people and identifying why they're not with us anymore. I know from personal experience that when you lose somebody young especially, the impact is far-reaching. There were numbers all over the place, but generally speaking, if you take the number of 2,500, those are the number of people that are gonna be involved in various social groups, work groups, family groups, and it's gonna spread out across that. So if you're losing 13, or 14, or 17 people a year in one community, you can just, you know, use simple math to know that the impact of that death is huge. This has been a moving target for us. And I can tell you that I was shocked by these numbers. I was shocked by the fact that the Department of Public Health had upgraded their reporting systems, and they were now tracking these things so much closer, and they're providing this information to people, namely Health Departments and Police Departments. I'm also shocked that this may be the first time that a lot of people are hearing these numbers. And if you don't hear anything else about tonight, it's the fact that we have a responsibility to stand up and do something about this. And it needs to be department-wide, agency-wide, and it needs to be personal. When I say it's a moving target, this is what I mean. I don't remember reading an obit in the paper about one of these people. Do you? In many cases now, someone dies of an overdose, and they don't even write an obit. And you know the reason they don't? Because they don't think it'll make a difference, and they don't want the embarrassment in their families. That needs to change. I'd love to see a townwide agency, quasi-agency, meeting, quarterly meeting, something that says, this information is available now. It's available on a timely basis, and we need to start talking about it and doing something about it. I don't know what that is. I really don't. I'm exhausted. But there are people that can and will. So hopefully, today marks the first day moving forward. We enjoy our Red Ribbon Week, and we start talking about what to do about the future. I know there's a lot of noise in society right now. But this is important, and we should move it up a couple of notches and do something about it. That's my message.
Thank you. I took to heart your point about losing people and not reading obituaries about them. And I think it would make a positive impact on the problem or on chasing a solution to the problem if people would acknowledge those deaths appropriately and if they felt the courage to. Because obviously, the stigma is what people want to avoid. So, you know, I think there's more and more acceptance, general acceptance, that this is not a recreational issue anymore. It's a disease. And it does, it requires a community-wide solution. So I am grateful for your efforts. I think the work you do is important, and I will certainly continue to support it. Counselor Laffin?
Thank you, and thank you for all that you do, Ken. I wanted to touch on that as well. I had a childhood friend that died with addiction issues, and his family hit it head-on in the obituary. It was very powerful, very impactful. And they said that that's, they felt that's how they had to handle it, to let everybody know that this was real, and that it was a disease, and that it was not something to be ashamed of. And it was something that he struggled with and fought with, ultimately lost, and hoped that others would have that support. So thank you for all that you do and encouraging others.
Thanks.
Counselor Carmody?
Evening, Mr. Welch. How are you? I just wanna echo what some of my other counselors have said. You have been an essential part in working to make Wallingford a drug-free community. And you spoke out when no others would listen or speak out with you, and work came to your side. So I commend you very much so for doing, you know, God's work, even when no one was standing by your side. And what you've done for our community is just amazing, and it's been life-saving. And so from the bottom of my heart, I wanna say thank you for all that you've done for our community. And we hopefully will be crossing paths again soon in some of these events that you have coming up.
Thank you.
Counselor Testa?
Thank you. Hey, Ken. I just wanna say this. We go way back. So I've never been surprised by what you've put into what you're doing right now, the way you do it. I saw it firsthand when we coached together. I just know who you are as a person. And I admire what you've been doing. I appreciate what you've been doing. And you'll always have my support. And I just wanna say thank you. Keep it up. You've got the family involved, and it's, we all owe you a debt of gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I will look forward to seeing you during Red Ribbon Week.
Somebody had to do that.
Elmer Fudd is here in the chambers.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, can I have a motion on the Consent Agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve or accept Consent Agenda items A through N.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none. The Consent Agenda passes. Item four, there are no items that were removed from the Consent Agenda. Item five, the public question-and-answer period. For the public question-and-answer period, Mr. Gross, I see you are on what is my right side of the auditorium. And because of the present camera situation, that is the only microphone we'll be using for the public tonight.
Bob Gross, Longview Road. I have a question. Could be to the chair, could be to the mayor. Who's responsible for, there's grants out there. There's steep grants. There's historic preservation grants and others. They're offered almost every year. Who's responsible for taking advantage of this funding?
Mayor, if I'm not mistaken, we have the Program Planning Department, as well as the various department heads who look for grants that might support projects that they're doing. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Then we're doing the train station over. Why haven't we applied for grants over the last 10, 15 years to improve that building?
We didn't, at the last meeting, didn't we approve a grant or one and a half, an application for one and a half million?
That's correct. The Community Challenge Grant, which is a relatively new grant.
But there's been grants available since 2005 that would have covered that building without us having to come up with a minimum of $1.75 million, I think is what we're coming up with here. Yes, I think because we're, or one and a half million, I think. One and a half million?
It's the number I remember.
Plus the money we've already put in. That's not reimbursable. So why haven't we done some upgrades, roofing, ventilation, anything to that building that is covered by grants? Why are we leaving all these grants on the table? Who's responsible? Now, you say that certain town departments are responsible. Whose department is it for the train station, then?
Public Works is the department responsible for the maintenance of the train station. Previous years, improvements were made, and we weren't reaching the life expectancy of those improvements. We now are reaching that life expectancy. And there's an opportunity with the Challenge Grant to be able to repurpose the train station for private use and have it be an economic development driver, as was explained at the prior meeting. So it's an entirely different set of circumstances. But in general, departments are active in watching for grants, and the Program Planning Office takes the lead in putting grant applications together.
This grant's available every year, so we've not, have we ever applied for the Historic Restoration Fund Grant?
I don't know if we ever have, but there were improvements made to the railroad station. We're now reaching an end to the life expectancy of the improvements made. So the estimates on money that it will take into the future years are pure estimates. They're not, those improvements aren't needed immediately, but there's an opportunity to repurpose the building.
I understand that, but certain aspects of the building could have been maintained over the years. It didn't all come due, the whole building didn't come to, as you're saying, the date, time, where we could have applied for grants all at once. That building wasn't renovated from bottom to top all at once, was it?
At some time in history, yes. You know, we're talking about a long number of years. There were renovations on the inside of the building. The exterior is primary responsibility of the Public Works Department, and there were improvements not too long ago. I don't have a history here to refer to.
But the question is then, if it's Public Works, who would have the time in the Public Works Department, they have a large town to maintain, who would have the time to sit down and write out those grants? Who would write out, so if Public Works wants a grant, who does the?
We have a grant writer in the Program Planning Office. They don't have to write the grant. They just have to identify the project or the use.
So steep grants, then. Why are there years that we don't apply for a steep grant, which is basically giveaway money?
Why does it rain?
Because of, you want the science behind it?
I understand the science.
Okay. Well, then why don't we apply for a steep grant? The science behind it is, all you have to do is fill out an application. We just go for parking lots, so go for the parking lots.
We have applied for steep grants regularly. You know, I don't, we're constantly chasing the same issues. You disagree. I disagree. We don't agree. So I don't know where we're supposed to go with this conversation.
Does the council have any say in this?
Not primarily. It is an administrative function.
Meaning yours?
Meaning administration. I'm part of that administration.
It's just, I think that the council, as we've witnessed, really doesn't have the power. There needs to be an ability for nine elected officials to have some say in how the town is run, to leave things on the table that other towns have been picking up year after year. You can look at the grants that have gone for steep grants. You'll see some towns pick up three different steep grants in the same year because they have three different projects, two different projects, year after year after year. Because there's only so many towns that can apply for a steep grant. They apply for them all the time. Wallingford's got gaps. We don't do anything. I don't understand why.
That's just not true. We have.
I can give you the year, you don't do anything.
Look, I don't agree with you.
I understand that, but I can give the years that Wallingford, and there were consecutive years, that nothing was applied for.
You like to pick and choose which grants you're talking about. We have received at least five, six grants on the small community block grants. That money has been used to make major improvements to the Wallingford Housing Authority.
Correct.
But we ignore all of that. All of that, that accounts for some, maybe $5 to $6 million that rents would have to go up in the housing authority, except that we've applied for grants. We had a transportation-oriented development grant, which we received, and a study was done, and that information is being used to apply for another grant.
And the housing authority does a wonderful job. And that's a housing authority that comes to you and asks for your signature and the council's signature because it has to be a pass-through grant, because the town isn't responsible for it. The housing authority's responsible for it after they get it. So I would just hope that the council would have some more say in this.
So you're at minute six of your first three. Can I just find out who else wants to speak? Is there anybody else who wants to speak during public question-and-answer?
And just a quick follow-up, then. The Wood and Kaplan parking lot, status? This is two years now?
That is being prepared for paving. I'm told that this week, the foundations for the interior lighting are to be installed. Once that is completed, and the conduits for the wiring for it placed in the repaired parking lot surface, it will be paved. It's expected this week it will be paved.
And that's a steep grant that we got for that?
I believe that grant is part of the funding on that.
Okay. So I remember years ago that a certain legislator came to you and offered to you to get you a steep grant to pave that lot, 10 years, nine, 10 years ago, and you refused it at that particular time. So that's why I'm saying council should be involved in some of this. Thank you.
Name an address for the record, please.
Herb Jackson.
You're gonna have to get closer to the mic.
Herb Jackson, the Maykato Corn. I just wanted to give a little input on regards. He made the comment about the historical grants. Historical grants are only available to buildings that have a designation of historical value. Now, if there's been modifications on that building during the years, most likely it's gonna lose that historical classification, just to kind of give you a little more information on it. So if it's not classified to the status being historical, you're not gonna be able to apply for that particular grant. That's all.
Anybody else want to speak besides Mr. Gross?
Mr. Gross? Just a clarification. The building we're talking about, as we all know and was discussed in the past, is a historical building by the state, and I think the feds also, Mr. Mayor. Is it a federal historic building or just the state?
It's on the National Historic Registry.
So the building we're talking about is a historic building, so it would have qualified for these grants. Thank you.
Anyone else? Name an address for the record, please.
Hi. I am Natalie Campagnola, and I live at 31 Greve Trail in Wallingford. Some of you look familiar to me, some of you do not, and I'm curious, just because I've spent a lot of time with the Coalition, I've been heavily involved with the Trail of Terror for the last 10 years, and I have found my way to worm my way into Wallingford, if that makes any sense. And I'm curious, are any of you involved with any sort of the community organizations in this town? Because some of you I've seen at events, and some of you I've had it, so just out of curiosity.
I think all of us, to one degree or another, are involved in community organizations of varying sorts.
Do you like them?
I think that's why we do it.
No.
And not, I don't pretend to speak for everyone, but.
Well, humor me. Show of hands. How many of you are involved in some sort of parents' group, community group, something with your kiddos, anything at all? Well, that's awesome. Okay, thank you. My point to that was, new to the town, I'm a new parent, I'm enjoying slowly becoming more involved in this community, and knowing that people that run the cool things in this town that I don't quite know about are involved makes me feel a lot better, because going off of what Ken and Jen have worked so hard about over the years, I'd like to think that I'm a product of these great things that the town has to offer. And as I'm going through life, and I've grown up slightly, it's impressive to me that I've been given the tools in order to handle what life throws at me. And so, their programs, Trail of Terror programs, and even things like Vinnie's Deli that they offer to the community, they definitely do work. So, if you didn't think that they did, they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, there being none, I close the public question and answer period, move on to item six.
Mr. Chairman, I move we ratify the Planning and Zoning Commission's unanimous vote to opt out of the requirements of Public Act 21-29 pertaining to residential parking requirements pertaining to accessory dwelling units or accessory apartments.
Moved, seconded by Counselor Fishbein. Can somebody tell us why we should do this? Oh, Mr. Pajini, is that you? Welcome.
Good evening. Nice to meet all of you.
If you could just, for the record, remind us who you are.
Yes, Kevin Pajini, town planner.
Thank you.
So, the General Connecticut Assembly passed Public Act 21-29 back in early 2021. It imposed regulations.
You're gonna want to stay closer to the mic. Thank you.
It imposed regulations relating to accessory apartments or accessory dwelling units, and also residential parking requirements, and amended section eight dash two of the Connecticut general statutes. The Planning and Zoning Commission opted out of these requirements by public hearing at the September 12 meeting, and now the town's legislative body, which is the town council, must opt out by two-thirds votes in order to forego these requirements. Essentially, the state requirements would kick in if the town would not opt out of these requirements, and the town does currently have accessory apartment requirements, that's section 6.15 of the Town of Wallingford zoning regulations. And the, essentially, the parking requirements from the state level would make it so that zoning cannot require more than one space per one bedroom dwelling unit, and no more than two parking spaces for a dwelling with two or more bedrooms. Currently, our regulations do require a bit more than that, but the Planning and Zoning Commission did not, said they opted out because it allowed the town more time to thoroughly review the town's regulations versus the Connecticut General Assembly statutes. The accessory apartment regulations are a bit more lengthy. I won't get into the details unless you would like me to.
If you could briefly, I'm sure there are people who are watching this meeting who weren't necessarily watching the planning and zoning meeting, and, you know, my understanding is the accessory dwellings would impose upon the town the requirement that they allow separate dwellings, you know, a second building on a property.
Correct.
For residential purposes.
Yes. As of right now, the town's requirements do not allow detached accessory apartments, whereas the state requirements would allow a detached unit.
And again, for the benefit of the public's knowledge, you know, why would, why would we want to stick to our regulation that prevents a detached dwelling unit, second dwelling unit on a property?
The Planning and Zoning Commission did have a discussion. I believe they want to potentially look at making it easier to allow accessory apartments for the public, but they were kind of hesitant to go as far as allowing detached dwelling units. That was their opinion on it. So, no, they do want to look at the requirements. They want to look at potentially doing some amendments to those requirements.
But they want to do it on their own time and not have it imposed by this public act?
Yes, that's correct.
Questions from the counselor, counselors, Counselors Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I just want to make sure that I'm following here. So, if we vote by two-thirds to opt out, we're going to be following the state's rules, which right now would allow detached dwellings on these properties, correct?
No, if you vote to opt out.
It's the other way?
Yes, other way around.
So, if we vote to opt out means we're not going to allow the detached?
Correct.
Okay, because, you know, I'm not, I'm not a regular attendee at the planning and zoning meetings, you know, but I know there's been off and on discussions over the years about attached accessory dwellings and how they're supposed to work. There's always, there's certain elements for that. So, in the attached dwellings, there's supposed to be like a singular utility unit, in other words, not separate electric.
Yes.
Not separate water. A detached building means the allowance for a complete separate set of utilities.
Correct.
And, and my, I don't really have a concern with that, except that I would say that if we're gonna, if we're gonna move towards doing something with a detached type of a scenario, why are we not allowing for more two and three family dwellings to be built? Because I know that there's been a lot of discussion around that. There's only certain zones in town that allow for that.
Right.
And so, can you help maybe explain that logic a little bit more? I mean, why are we doing this in effect to try to allow for more affordable housing? And what's the element as far, I'm a little bit concerned about the parking as well, because a lot of the, my understanding is a lot of the applications, if you will, to do elements like this define that parking spot as the public street. And it's not that I've got an issue with the definition being, one of the, one of the elements for the building is we're going to have on-street parking, but we have a lot of situations, especially during the wintertime when we're dealing with snow removal, where these people do not move their cars. And not just, not just the new dwellings, a lot of people in general. They either do not get the message or are completely indifferent to it. And the problem that I've got with scenarios like that one is it, it ends up being a lot of different anxiety for everybody, right? Some people get ticketed and towed, other people do not. Public Works has to take the brunt of it. Sometimes the police are not available. And then there's just the, the situation when cars remain, just like when they're sweeping the streets. Everything gets pushed out in the road, and that becomes a hazard two and three days later, when people are expecting more clearer roads, and they end up hitting those plow roads that are being left behind, because the town plows have no other option but to move around them. So, I want to be very, I want all of us to be very sensitive to the action here. So, can you kind of define why we would maybe favor this and not favor more design setup for like two and three family houses instead?
That was a lot to take in.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It was my, my thought, my thought process on this is, I, you know, I want to be open-minded about this, but I've got some concerns about where I believe a majority of these elements would end up being.
Right now, our parking requirements for one and two-bedroom residential, because this only pertains to residential, it doesn't pertain to any other parking requirements, allow for, require slightly more than this. I believe it's like one, some better, one-bedroom units. So, we're not too far off, and I believe in some, some zones, they are looking at reducing the residential parking requirements, specifically in the town center. I believe that may be a point of discussion tomorrow. So, I don't think we're too far off in that respect. So, I don't know if opting out of this would change our regulations dramatically as they stand right now. In terms of accessory apartments, yes, I think that's a big point of discussion, the detached versus the attached. This seemed to be a strong point of discussion with the Planning and Zoning Commission. I don't want to put words in their mouth as to how they feel. They opted out of this because they wanted to look at accessory apartments, where they can go in potentially in other areas where they, as detached units, potentially, I don't know what their thought process is on making the, making the regulations slightly less strict, but I think that was the position they were going in, direction they were going in. So, I don't know how else you would want to look into that, or potentially, you know, come to a meeting and discuss that when we have those discussions. Certainly, I would like more input, because I think, I think a lot, making the process easier could benefit a lot of people, especially an aging population, so.
So, as a follow-up to that, I know, and I know it's a minor activity in town right now, but I see these, these additional dwellings becoming, making something coming to more focus. So, right now, there's, I don't believe there's any restrictions, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, on, on people renting out their houses for a scenario like, you know, VBRO or Airbnb. So, if I own a house, and I decide to buy a house in Florida and live down there, and I think, gee, maybe I can do Airbnb and get a lot of the people to go to Chote, I can do that pretty freely. There's no restriction.
Yeah, we do not restrict short-term rentals, right.
So, now, I might be enticed if I'm, if I have the desire, the means, or the want to add on, I've got now an additional independent dwelling.
Yes.
Do something just like that. So, these are where some of my concerns come in, especially in light of another element, which I believe I've had a conversation with you before in the past, around some of the households that end up getting rented out, where there's five and six college students renting a per-bedroom basis.
Right.
And in a, in a deep residential area, and it becomes a disruption, but it's a loud use. So, I think we have to be real careful about these types of changes, because you can change the, the element of a neighborhood by allowing, allowing an intended flexibility for better living, a better, more, a more financially resolved, issued for people that are under some level of constraint, when they're trying to find an affordable way to live, and we're opening the door for another element that's unintended. So, I think as we look at these other solutions for housing, that we might want to, to identify that if they've applied to have this additional housing built, that we find a way to include in the language a restriction, even if it's a period of time, that it will not be rented out, it will not be leased, it will not be, you know, profiteered against, because the intention here is to build affordable housing for elderly parents or, you know, other, other people of lesser means to be able to find a place to live, rather than making it so that we change the dynamic of a neighborhood for people that just want to lease out the extra area.
So, the state requirements would go the direction that you're saying. It would allow for anyone to rent it out, whereas our restrictions right now, one of the occupants of the dwelling at all times shall be in order of record, and owner shall be defined as someone who has at least one-half ownership interest in the property. So, the state requirements would be much looser, our requirements are stricter as of right now.
So, that's, that's another reason to support the opting out, because our restrictions are tighter on that.
Yes, yep.
And again, you know, my personal outline on this is, I'm not looking to say to people, hey, look, you own a piece of property, you can't do a bunch of stuff with it.
Right.
But I think, I think we, a lot of us deal in different neighborhoods with, with certain expectations into living in a certain area, and also understanding people's rights to do what they want with property they own. But there's got to be a meeting in the middle, and you can't take a deep residential area and turn it into something that's more condensed housing and vice versa. And so, that's why a lot of times, even with these multifamily units, they're only allowed in certain zones.
Right.
I think that's all the questions I have right now. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Just to be clear, this vote tonight doesn't foreclose us from examining accessory dwellings and changing in our parking regulations.
Correct.
We're just, it's going to allow our Planning and Zoning Commission to do it on its own timeline.
Correct.
Thank you. Counselor Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Pajini. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. You find yourself in a hot seat having to speak for the Planning and Zoning Commission, but.
It's okay.
I'm surprised none of them are here, because a lot of our questions end up, can very easily become, what are they thinking? And then you have to share with us what they're thinking, but.
Not entirely sure.
Welcome to the job. I, I, as a rural, tend to not get, try to get too involved in the, the responsibilities of various departments, boards, commissions, and in this case, by law, we need to approve what's being requested. So, I'm not, my question is not about, you know, prove to me this is a good idea, but I just want a better understanding of what they're thinking about one thing in particular. We are, I'm, I'm not in favor of opening properties up to, you know, crazy development.
Right.
And, but, you know, we're, we find ourselves in the era of the tiny home, and.
Yes, yes.
Right? So, but one thing that always struck me from that concept was something I saw a while back about senior pods, called that, okay?
Yes, yeah.
So, when we think about accessory dwellings, many times, we call it an in-law apartment. So, people want to be able to, they have a nice property with a little extra space. They say, I'd love my mother, my father, my grandmother, whatever, to be able to live with us. But, we have the property, we could put in this small unit, this tiny home, this senior pod.
Right.
That might, you know, allow them to be here, but still provide the independence. They're not living in, you know, in a, in the basement or something where they're, they're attached. So, is it, your understanding, that the Planning and Zoning Commission is open to altering the regulations down the road that would potentially provide for that eventuality, but they want to be able, as someone else said, they want to be able to write it into the regulations on their own terms?
Yes, there.
Does that seem that way?
It's definitely trending, it seems like, from the discussion at the last meeting, that they're looking to, you know, open it up and potentially make it a bit easier, especially for, like you said, the older generation that may need, you know, the in-law apartment. They're trying, I tried to sway them away from the negative connotation of an accessory apartment. I think, like you said, it could be a positive aspect to a neighborhood, especially for, you know, aging community, but it also could have a, obviously detrimental impact to a neighborhood as well. So, you know, there is definitely a discussion to be had, and I think they're, they're trending. I believe somebody brought up at the meeting that North Haven just allows them, without any sort of meeting, any sort of process, they just go in, say they want an accessory apartment, and it's granted. So, that sort of struck them a bit. I haven't looked into whether or not that's true. It was brought up by a member of the public, but, so it's something I think struck a chord with some of the members, and I think there's some discussion in the minutes regarding that. I don't know if they're trending in that direction fully, but I think they're, they're going to look at, I think, I think the state eventually is probably trending more in this direction, where they're going to allow for the easier process. So, I think, take from it what you will, but I know they're, they're open to exploring the options in regards to this.
That, that's helpful, because I, I would be concerned if taking this action put us in a position where we were specifically precluding the possibility of those types of building down the road. So, if you're saying that this is allowing us to still consider those, but at our own pace, according to our own values, our own zoning requirements, so to speak.
Yep.
Then I, then I'm comfortable. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Carmody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Both of your questions and Counselor Testa's, I, I pretty much answered mine. You know, I did read through the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes, and I, I was looking for clarification as to the motion about opting out because it allows the town more time to thoroughly review the town regulations versus the Connecticut general statute. So, I think.
Yes.
Go ahead, sorry.
No, that's exactly.
Yeah, I think we covered that pretty, pretty well here. I did notice in the minutes, you know, there was talk about having a workshop on this issue. You alluded to that as well. So it, this is not a done deal in any regard, if I, if I interpret that correctly.
That's correct. They do, they would like to have a workshop, I believe they said, within the next four to five months, depending on how their schedules play out. So, correct. It's not a done deal. It's certainly open for discussion. I think they want to have that discussion.
Sure. And, and, excuse my, my lack of knowledge here, but why are we voting on this tonight if, if the Planning and Zoning Commission can bring this up again?
It's a state requirement from the Public Act that the town's municipal legislative body must act by a two-thirds vote to opt out after the Planning and Zoning Commission action.
And the, and the only benefit of opting out is it gives the Planning and Zoning Commission more.
They just didn't like how they read, they didn't like how they, how they basically, I don't know, they just didn't like the regulations that were proposed from the state, so they wanted to.
But then they can, they can, they can work on their own. Is that not correct? Update?
Well, they want to, they want to opt out first.
January comes. January are really, they're, they're pretty far from what most towns, I think, are doing. Some towns don't allow them at all, I guess. So if you don't do something, if you don't opt out, the law will take effect in January with your town, no matter what your regs say. So this is the, this is.
And then we can't amend or make any changes?
Well, we can change.
Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson, yes. Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Tatta?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Sirvoni?
Yes. Got the same result here, Mr. Bagini.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Have a good evening.
You too. Onto item seven.
We approve a bid waiver request authorizing the Police Station Steering Committee to obtain quotes for electrical switchgear between the amount of eight hundred, I'm sorry, eighty thousand and one hundred thousand dollars.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Chairman, rule, point of order.
Counselor Fishbein.
It appears that we are reconsidering something that we dealt with on the next, on the last meeting. In fact, the backup is exactly the same. And I think under Roberts' Rules of thirty-seven, I think it is, that that motion has to be made by someone that was in the winning, per se, side. So I think the motions before us is out of order.
I disagree. I think that Roberts' Rules, that rule applies to the same meeting.
Well, I just happen to bring Roberts' Rules.
Mr. Chairman?
Mayor.
In general, Roberts' Rules apply to a single meeting, and the purpose of the rule is to prevent one item from constantly coming back and obstructing other business from being dealt with. Any agenda can have any business on it. Once that, the meeting occurs, then Roberts' Rules deal with the conduct of that meeting.
Also, if you look at the renewal section of Roberts' Rules, a motion can be brought up at a subsequent meeting. It's more of a renewal than reconsideration. So you can bring it, you can bring it back at, at a future meeting.
But the criteria by which, Janice, you were referencing Rule eighty?
I don't know the number. I know it's the renewal section.
Okay, I'm looking at reconsider.
Okay, so take a look at the renewal section.
Okay. So now we gotta find, well, we'll start with reconsider, because that's where I am. Says it can only be made by a member who voted with the prevailing side. Purpose of reconsidering a vote is to permit correction of a hasty, ill-advised, erroneous act or to take into account added information or a changed situation that's developed since the taking of the vote. So that would lead one to believe that some time has passed, and there is a reconsideration. Now you're saying, what section?
There's a section on renewal. You can renewal a motion at a subsequent meeting. It's always permitted as a later meeting, is what Roberts says.
So renewal is three-three-six. Because I don't, I mean, looking at the agenda, I don't think it's, it's even drafted that way. It says.
It doesn't have to use special language and say it's renewal. It's being brought back to a subsequent meeting, so that's the category that it falls into.
Okay. When I look at renewal, which is Rule thirty-eight, it says if a motion is made and disposed of without being adopted, and is later allowed to come before the assembly after being made again by any member in essentially the same connection. That would be, the member would have to be, have the same connection as the failure. So I just, I just, I'm not, because I think we're gonna end up getting to the same place. I just, we have rules, and I'd like to follow the rules. So is there a particular portion of Roberts by which one who is on?
Built around a single meeting. There is no rule anywhere that would said, said, would say that an item can't be brought up anew at a subsequent meeting. It doesn't control. Purpose is to allow for the responsible conduct of business at a single meeting. It doesn't say you can't bring an item back and put it on agenda a year from now, a week from now. I mean, that would be crazy to develop rules that would restrict someone from ever talking about something again, because there was a vote that was taken six months before. Roberts' Rules are dealing with how to conduct responsibly business at a single meeting. When the meeting ends, the whole, the slate becomes even again, and the next agenda will dictate what will be taken up at that meeting.
I, I would perhaps agree, Mr. Chairman. However, the backup for this item is before us, the same exact backup that we had last time. Perhaps if there was new information, new backup, something like that, that would be appropriate. But all we have is regurgitation of the same exact document that was in, you know, in, in order for me to be prepared for this meeting, I would have liked to, I think we all should be entitled to whatever new information there is, to give light to this. I mean, I'm just trying to, if, if it's gonna be the rule of this body, that any motion that is ever taken at a meeting can be changed at the next meeting, so be it. That's where we are. But I'm just trying to figure out, under what rule do we get this on this agenda with the same exact backup and no additional information?
Mr. Chairman?
Mayor.
There is nothing anywhere that says there must be new information. The information is compelling in what it states. The town can save money rather than have a whole project stopped to wait for receipt of switchgear. That is the purpose. It's a simple purpose. It's a good purpose. Once again, conduct at one meeting does not control what can be dealt with at another meeting. Roberts' Rules was never developed to control what goes on for a year, two years, five years, ten years of meetings.
So, Mr. Chairman, we heard the same exact thing at the last meeting?
Well, not necessarily. You haven't seen a presentation yet. The only same thing is the item that was backed up with the agenda packet.
Understood. The, the only backup that we have is the same backup that we had, and the argument that we just heard from the administration, same, same argument that was made at the last meeting. So.
The argument, the argument is only with respect to the point of order that was raised. It's not on the presentation of the whole item.
No, I, I just heard that what is before us is to possibly save money for the town. That, that was what the mayor just said. So that's the underlying. Procedurally, we're not at that right now. I'm just trying to figure out, how do we get to this item under the rules that we are supposed to be playing by here?
There is no rule that precludes this item from appearing on this agenda. The Roberts' Rules, the rules that are being cited, apply to a singular meeting.
And is there a particular portion of Roberts', because I spent like an hour doing this today, and I didn't find any provision in either of those two sections that say it only applies to one meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Mayor.
I believe that the language of Roberts' Rules, all, it completely is oriented to the conduct of business at a single meeting. That's the purpose of Roberts' Rules, to allow a meeting to occur in a responsible way and have business conducted, and not allow things to disrupt and make impossible the conduct of business. It doesn't refer to a subsequent meeting. Roberts' Rules is just meant to, when you hold a meeting, you follow Roberts' Rules for that meeting, and at the next meeting, you'll follow Roberts' Rules. It doesn't, it doesn't refer to what can be an agenda item.
I have to disagree, because I'm looking once again at Rule thirty-seven, and that talks about different kinds of meetings. And it says, in a convention or session of more than one day, a reconsideration can be moved only on the same day as the original vote was taken, or on a succeeding day. So certainly Roberts' Rules deals with more than one day, because here we have, here we have a preclusion.
But it's a continuation of the same meeting.
That's correct.
It's not a different meeting. A, a meeting can occur over several days. It could occur over a month. Meeting begins, and then it ends.
I have asked for the provision that provides for this to happen. I guess the answer is, there is no provision. And that, I guess, becomes the precedent set by this body, that any motion that we take can be reconsidered or perhaps reversed at a subsequent meeting. I think that's dangerous precedent to set, because I would be, you know, in order to advance this item, I would be in favor of making that motion, so that we could get us back on track with what I believe the rules provide. I'm not looking to preclude here. I'm looking to advance and to keep us within the rules. If you think you're right, fine. We'll deal with that precedent. We may have a problem with that precedent in the future, but so be it.
Counselor Zandry. We're still talking about the.
Yeah, and that's, I was actually gonna clear that up. I, I wanted to speak to the item, and I realized after I waved you up that we're speaking about the point of order, so can I defer until we?
Yes, you can.
Okay, later. Sorry about that.
Counselor Testa, were you interested in speaking on the item or the point of order?
Point of order.
Then go ahead.
Thank you. I had questions about this myself when I saw it on the agenda. But then again, I'm looking at a pretty well-written explanation of Roberts' Rules by someone who is a professional registered parliamentarian. And the simple statement is that Roberts' Rules make it easy to reintroduce a defeated motion at a future meeting, and also talks about what's been said before, that the reconsideration is not allowed during an, an individual meeting. So on a matter of, I was wondering if this is even addressed in our bylaws. I didn't happen to see anything that said as a count, because that's what really, is the, is the true rule, those are the true rules about how we work. If there was anything in our bylaws that said we could not do this, and I don't think there is. I'm speaking as one who voted in favor of this motion, and yet we came into this meeting, and I started feeling uncomfortable about the reconsideration. But that's not gonna make me change my vote, unless I felt it was, I don't know, like totally inappropriate. Apparently, according to all the readings of Roberts' Rules, it's not inappropriate. But it does bring up one thing that I would ask. I think back to when we voted on attempting to overrule the mayor's veto on community pool. The next meeting, I could have brought that, put that back on the agenda. And every meeting after that, I.
Now, the veto override has a time provision in it.
Well, then I would have called for special meetings every two days. My, my point is, so we're saying that.
Now I know what to look forward to.
That could have, that could have been brought up again, because there have been members on here that have said in subsequent meetings, you know, the more I think about it, I wish I did not, I wish I voted to not over, to override the veto. I wish I voted to override the veto. So now I see that, gosh, we could have done that. But in partial agreement with Counselor Fishbein that. Responsibly. I don't think there's any question, frankly, why it's on the agenda tonight, because we didn't have a full council last meeting, and we do this meeting. So there was, I'm sure it was felt by the administration, hey, let's give it one more try, maybe we can get it through this time. That's what's going on, so. That's what's going on, so. Having said that, I don't think there's anything that says we cannot do this.
I know. We've been doing this for years, I know.
I, no, for real.
But I guess the problem, the problem is, you sort of heard tonight that Robert's Rules only deals with a single meeting, but then you're telling me that what you just looked at deals with a subsequent meeting, and talks about the ease of bringing that up at a subsequent meeting. So, I don't know. I mean, I think Robert's Rules has to do with subsequent meetings as well, but I understand where we are. Once again, not looking a block, I just...
That's what you mean.
Because I would be, you know, if the procedure is as I think it is, I would be willing to make that motion, but I guess we create the precedent and we go from there. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Zandry, I presume we're still talking about the point of order?
Yeah, because the more I thought about the element of what I was going to ask, it does lend a little bit more to the point of order. So what, what happens if we, as a council, commit an item and we vote yes on something, and someone brings it up the following week, and we start to execute on something, and then we take another vote, and then we stop it? I mean, as I started to think about it, that's really what we're doing here, and Counselor Testa kind of outlined it. There's, all we've done is brought this back for a revote, and he's crystal clear on that. We had seven people, there were four affirmative, three no, it wasn't five to pass it, so all we did is replay it again with a full council. And that's, it fits to the rules, but does it fit to the spirit? The body voted on it and didn't pass it, so we're bringing it back for another swing because there's a full nine of us up here. Do we, do we want to get into a game of brinkmanship up here when we get a situation where something doesn't go the way that we want it to go because there's one or two people that weren't here, and now that we've got a full body, let's vote for it all over again? I mean, I, I think we're, we're getting into an area where that may become not the best activity. We talk about responsible conduct, the vote was taken, the answer was no. So, we brought it back now that we've got a better opportunity? I mean, at least when we did Wood and Kaplan, not Wood and Kaplan, but the Simpson Court parking revote 10 years later, at least elements were different, things were changed. The plan was, was augmented. So it wasn't an apples-to-apples revote on the same thing. It was the same property, different set of materials, but this is exactly the same. And I guess I'm asking, is this something that we should really be doing?
It's a fair question. We might be opening a door that we don't want to continuously walk through, but I think that the administration or the committee should be given the opportunity to further explain the compelling reasons that support the need for the bid waiver.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Counselor Testa.
Yeah, briefly, Mr. Chairman, just on a side, I want to apologize for my colleague, Counselor Fishbein, for real.
No problem.
We have fun, I have fun, but that was, that was a little, that was a little too much, a little snide comment I made, and there's no need for that, so I do apologize for that.
Thank you. Back to your corners. Counselor Laffin.
Thank you. And I wish I had brought my copy of Robert's Rules. Motion to reconsider is a single meeting or a session of multi-day meetings, I'm sorry, a one-long meeting over multi-days like a convention. But I guess if, if it's believed that the motion may reach a different outcome, then that would be a responsible renewal versus just doing it for the sake of obstruction and consent debate.
Thank you. So the ruling of the chair is that the motion is... ...on the point of order. I'm going to ask the committee members to begin presenting, and if you could remind us who you are for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Allison Kapaczynski, Chair of the Police Station Steering Committee, and I'm joined by...
Jeff Anderson with Downs Construction, your construction manager for the police department.
So we're here tonight to request a bid waiver to purchase electrical switchgear. The electrical switchgear is for the proposed police headquarters at 100 Barnes Road, and it's a, it's an essential piece of equipment for the electrical system for the proposed building. So what we're looking to do is, we've been advised by Downs pretty much since the day they were hired in April, they've always been reporting to the committee about this growing lead time for the switchgear. When we first started, it was about 50 weeks or so, and when they put together their schedule, which they update regularly, they realized that, okay, that could fit in, that works. As soon as it took a jump a month or two ago to 60 to 70 weeks, that was immediately a problem. The whole construction is expected to last 65 weeks. As explained in the memo, once the switchgear is procured and on-site, it has to go through installation, testing, commissioning, inspections, it has to go through a whole gamut of requirements before it could be fully used in the building. So how the committee looked at it is that Downs is being paid, they have a, it basically gets broken down to a monthly basis. So their bid was awarded based on an assumed 15-month construction, that was the belief at the time. If we weren't able to pre-purchase this electrical switchgear, then that construction would end up, we would almost add probably two months to that. And to put it into perspective, their general conditions and general requirements, which are, could be broken down to a monthly basis, equals $75,000 a month. On top of that, you have something that we can't, we can't put into numbers right now, because if the switchgear were included as part of the electrical package, which is being publicly bid, the balance of it, then that subcontract is going to have to include cost in their bid with, you know, assuming that there's going to be a few months added to this construction. They're also going to be including the risk of carrying this piece of equipment, which is, is hard to come by. Do you have anything to add, Jeff?
I think that's a good synopsis, Allison. You know, the sole goal is to save the town of Wallingford money as it relates to the overall instruction of the new police department. And that's why we approached the steering committee originally with this, because we have the experience of seeing these extensive lead times causing impact to construction schedules, and impact, construction schedules, of course, is, is money.
So, the result of the vote at the last meeting is to say, you're stuck with the bid process, okay? And suppose you went out to bid right now on the switchgear, you entertained purchase from the lowest qualified bidder, and why, why is that put us at a disadvantage?
Well, I think, you know, I may not get the exact math correct as it relates to the full approval process from the town, but I had explained at the last meeting that there's about an eight-week total process for us to both bid the project, scope review, develop a guaranteed maximum price amendment, and then submit it to the town for approval. So whatever the approval time is beyond that eight weeks to give us a notice to proceed would be the approximate day that we commence with the release of the switchgear. So if we can release switchgear with approval, within the next few weeks, we're gaining two to three months in that overall process, ballpark discussion.
And we already heard that once we do go out to bid, if we identify the successful bidder, we could be waiting for the switchgear for 60 weeks.
That's correct. That's what...
It could be.
Everything's been indicated right now.
Anything else that makes this more compelling than, than it was two weeks ago?
I mean, I, at the risk of repeating myself, I think, you know, we approached the, the steering committee with the simple concept of trying to advise you on how best to approach the overall construction of the project. This component, from our experience, what we're doing successfully on multiple projects right now, the best way to approach it is to pre-purchase it and get it on order as soon as possible, so that there's not an impact, the back end of a project from a cost perspective related to time.
I also would like to add that I did have a conversation with our comptroller, who works very closely with the bound council, and apparently I was a little overzealous with my hope that they'd be able to turn around a ordinance amendment for the bond increase in a few days for your December meeting. So, that being said, our options really become possibly a special meeting the week of Christmas, which I cannot imagine that would have any support, and so realistically, we're looking at January. So that really adds another month of delay onto being able to obtain this electrical switchgear.
Thank you. Other questions, comments from the council? Counselor Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't speak to the point of order because I wanted to see if there was any new info, so I figured I would hear it out first. There's not, there's no new info. It's basically the same presentation we received two weeks ago. And if time savings is such a big deal, I'm not sure why after that vote, we didn't already start working on the bids. So now we wasted two weeks, even though the reason is that we're trying to save time.
I would like to respond to that if I may.
Sure. Can I just finish and then we'll...
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. I don't want anyone to lose sight of the fact that this is an $80,000 to $100,000 bid waiver. So, the way I'm looking at it, this is to protect the taxpayers' money, the fact that we would go out to bid. But, you know, I think it was stated before, but the reason we're seeing this again is because there were two counselors who weren't present at the meeting. And I don't think it's fair that, you know, anybody would get a second stab at a vote that the council already took just because we had members not present. You know, we spoke about it, we voted, and now there's potentially two more yes votes, so we see the exact same item again. I think a lot of us have lost our fair share of battles up here on the council, but we respect the will of the council, we respect what our other counselors think, and we move on. And that doesn't seem like that's what happened here. I'm not appreciative that it was added to the agenda again, I'm not so sure that if, as Counselor Fishbein was saying before, you know, we, we're going to get into a situation now where anytime somebody, you know, loses a battle, they can just throw it on the next agenda again. We're going to keep having the same items over and over again, hoping that more, more counselors will be present, or somebody changes their mind. So, you know, I think there is a rule, and our council rule is to address this, and it's the rule that states that our chairman has a discretion. And I'm concerned now that the will of the council that we're here was not respected, and this was put on the agenda again, and now may have a different outcome. So I would just ask my fellow counselors to, you know, potentially consider voting against this out of principle, even if you voted for it initially, I would just ask to consider that, just out of respect for your fellow counselors' prior vote. You know, our vice chairman led a great meeting at that meeting, and I know you often say the decisions are made by those who show up, and that decision was made by, by those of us who are here. So I would, I would like to think that we have enough respect for each other that we would all respect the decision that was made by those of us that were here that evening. Thank you.
Counselor Marrone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
I don't think your microphone's on.
Sorry, I'm new here. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So I guess there's two issues here. So one is that this is a rebidding of the, of the item, and it's in the, in the idea of saving the taxpayers' money, which I think is a, is certainly a noble endeavor. And this is to not, not to the discredit of Ms. Kapaczynski or Mr. Anderson, but, you know, we've been, there hasn't been a time that I've been in public service that we haven't been talking about the replacement of the police station. So it's a little ironic that we talk about saving money, and we're, we're building the police station at the worst possible time in the past 30 years that we could be doing a, a construction project like this. So now for me, it's, do you delay the project in the hopes that something in the market changes, which is really a huge crapshoot, right? Because there's no guarantee that anything's going to get better. I mean, the economy certainly seems like it's, it's sort of on the, on the decline, but there's no guarantees that any of the, you know, the supply chains are going to get corrected in the next period of time. So, you know, we always talk about waiting, you know, for, for better times, and in this time, we waited, and we, we hit a much worse time, where we're probably, you know, $10 million is what we're going to spend in excess of what we had planned on this originally. So I don't know, you know, with respect to my colleagues, I can entirely appreciate the, the concept of the will of the council. I don't know that I can change my vote based on, I still think that it's going to cost the taxpayers more money to delay. So I guess for that reason, I wish we weren't in a position where now, you know, we waited till the economy was at its worst possible moment to try to undertake this project. But again, we need a police station, so I can't argue, you know, there's, there's not a part of me that can argue to, to wait any further on the project. So I guess, you know, I wish we were in a, in a better position, but, but we are where we are. So, but thank you very much for your, for your presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I want to play devil's advocate here, because Counselor Todd made a good point. You know, we, we, there were four affirmative votes, three that were no, we need five to take an action, and we took on no activity for two weeks about going out to bid because this got brought back up again, you know, for consideration for another vote. What happens if it's no today?
So I would like to address that. Thank you very much. So, the switchgear as it stands today is included in the public bid for the electrical package. What would happen, and Downs is figuring out or finishing their bids this week, at that point, it'll go to the purchasing department. If between now and when Downs completes their bid, they have the time to remove the switchgear from the package if this bid waiver is successful, then that's what they'll do. If not, they will issue an addendum to the bid package that would remove it. So there are options, and there, there is a little time, but we absolutely do not take this request for granted. We understand that it is a request to the town council, and bid waivers are not taken lightly. So we made sure to hope, to build in that contingency, so we certainly have a plan.
Yeah, and I don't want to, I didn't want the devil's advocate question to come across like accusatory. I, I'm just trying to think in my head, because as we sit up here, we've all discussed different things here, trying to save the taxpayers' money, taking a look at what a prior vote was, do we potentially undo it here? I can remember plenty of times sitting up there, there was only six people up here, and there was important things to get executed, and we didn't have enough votes because things were going down three to three, four to two, because we didn't have enough bodies. For whatever reason, people couldn't make it. Everybody that's up here does, does the best job they possibly can be to be at every single one of these meetings, but life and work responsibilities makes it sometimes we can't. It doesn't mean there was any less effort going into any of the discussions, even when it was a limited number of people up here. But it, it does give me a little bit of concern to come back and basically do something over again for a potential more favorable outcome because the attendance change. That could go the other way. If a couple of people, if we knew that some people were out on vacation or were going to be traveling for work, we could slip an item back on, it would go through the normal process, but knowing who was going to be absent, you know, it could get pushed through. And that's why I said I don't want to start brinksmanship games up here. It's too, managing the responsibilities of what we do up here and, and the taxpayers' money, that's way more important, and I don't want to lose focus on that. But I appreciate that there's a mechanism there. If this goes no tonight, that there's, there's a way to continue and act on it. So, again, I guess it really comes back up to the discussion up here for all of us, you know, if, if we're going to either, you know, vote the same way we voted last time or, or vote to carry on the will of this decision from the last, from the last meeting of the council for the members that were present. I guess that's really where we are with that. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Carmody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Ms. Kapaczynski, Mr. Anderson. I see Mr. Walworth out in the audience. I know all of you have been working very hard on this project, and I commend you for all that you've been doing to upgrade and modernize our, our police station, something that we will be very proud of. I had, I just had a question, because I'm not a big fan of bid waivers. You know, this is a large amount of money that we are talking about without going out to bid, and I'm a strong believer in an open bidding process and, and full transparency. And I guess my, my question is, why did this not go out to bid earlier on in the process? Why didn't we put this out to bid six months ago when I feel like we would have already known that this was a situation?
So that certainly was discussed, you know, if we could go out to bid earlier for this one piece of equipment. Unfortunately, with the lead times that are, that have been ever growing, and they still continue to grow, there's, it's, it was Downs and Jaconcy Hughes' professional opinions that we're not going to get any bids on, on this one piece of equipment that you're carrying so much risk for. And this also cuts out the middleman and allows Downs to just coordinate directly with the main... man and allows Downs to just coordinate directly with the manufacturer.
And I would just add that the documents, the drawings and specifications for the gear were only completed approximately a month ago. So, we wouldn't be able to go out any sooner than what we talked about for the last presentation.
And one last question. Is there a preferred vendor? Is there someone specific that you're using?
The engineer who works for the architect has a basis of design typically, that it's called. The name's escaping me. It might be either Eaton or Square D. Those are...
Those are the manufacturers?
Yeah, the manufacturers of the gear. So, we will have, if this is approved, quotes from each one of those main manufacturers. They're all similar for all projects, to be able to share with whoever needs it within the town, certainly the steering committee and, of course, Allison in the mayor's office.
Okay. I'm still, I'm still thinking on how I'm going to vote, but I, you know, again, I commend both of you and all of you who are involved in this process. I know it's a lot of work.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you. Hoping, obviously, saving money is a good thing. I said that last time. Hopefully, to appease or to help some of the other counselors or the people feel better about the other issue that's been kicking around. So, the motion passed, passed. The motion received a simple majority of four votes last time. Our charter, however, a rule, requires that the council have five votes for action. A renewal, which is a Roberts' rule, allows for a defeated motion to return at a future meeting. In order to bring back, which would then require a majority to pass it. To bring back a motion that was successful at a previous meeting, you would need to motion to rescind a previous motion, which, again, then that requires a majority. So, you could not bring back an item that would then fail by the rules of either Roberts' rules or the charter, which are creating artificial or whatever predetermined limits are. I think, I think we all agree, and as Counselor Tada has said, that we've all been on the losing end of various battles on the council, that ultimately, if a majority of the council, if five members, if a clean five members support something, then that is ultimately the will of the council and the people. And I don't think we can go wrong with that, especially in this case, when we're looking to not just save money, but save time. Thanks.
Counselor Fishbein?
I think we're past the renewal, all that stuff. I just want to talk about the merits of what's before us. And, you know, as I indicated before, I was willing to make the motion to get us where we are, which would indicate that I'm in favor of what's before us. And I have reflected about the meeting, and Allison, you're always very impressive to me. I just, I, you know, you know your stuff, and I very much appreciate that. But, you know, after the meeting last time, you know, I did think about this a lot. I didn't expect it to be on this agenda, quite frankly, but I am prepared to support your request here tonight. So, I just wanted to say that's where I'm at. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Members of the public? There being none, I bring it back to the council for a roll call vote.
Yes.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Cervoni?
Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. On to item eight. Mr. Chairman, a move we approve the revisions of the opera evaluation forms. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Attorney Small, what have you done?
What have I done? Just doesn't seem to end. So, I, before you revise the evaluation sheets, I had a conference with the consultant and chairman of the review committee, who we just had, it was mainly I wanted the chairman to meet the consultant, and we talked about some housekeeping or scheduling issues. And the chairman did post some questions about the first drafts of the, or the approved drafts of the evaluation criteria, and I thought the questions actually were pretty good. So, I reworked them, which I think, if you've looked at them, I think it's a better stated criteria, and it works better. For example, we had one on the business that said, let me find it, has disclosed requests and awards of other relief funding and is not in conflict. Well, it can't be anyway. So, there's no scale of points to give for that. We're not allowed, either under the federal rules or our own rules, to duplicate funding. So, that didn't necessarily need to be there as something that you get up to 10 points for. So, by taking that out and reworking some of the language, I do think it's a better evaluation form. Also, the meeting that I was not in attendance at, in doing the evaluation approval, the council removed nonprofits from, I had them included with the business, only for the point of if they were looking for a grant for actual economic harm suffered by their organization. And for that category, I felt that the business criteria was more appropriate, and you did vote to take that out, and I just, if that's the way you wish to have it, that's fine. I just don't think that the criteria that we've developed on the nonprofit program evaluation sheet fits that same category. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention and see how you wish to handle that. Does that make sense? No?
Any questions or comments from the council? Seen none. Any questions or comments from the public? Mr. Jackson?
Good evening once again, Herb Jackson. I had a question in regards to the cover sheet. It states in the, in the top area here, I'll just kind of go right down to, "The general purpose of the grant is to assist in the retention and rehiring of employees, recruitment of new employees, and capital building, or equipment improvements, unpaid rent, mortgage, or other expenses." And as you go down to grant conditions, number one states that funds may not be used for reserves, lost profits, or payment on debt. To me, that kind of contradicts what it says at the top of unpaid rent. That would be considered a debt, last time I heard.
I didn't bring the other, I didn't bring the whole packet. I just brought the evaluation sheets, so I'm not sure.
Do you copy that, Dwight?
I don't, I think that's meant to be, and it's a good point. I think that's meant to be, we're not looking to make current payments on, like, current payments on mortgage payments, for example. I think that's what that was supposed to mean. So, it's like, you know, if you suffered an economic loss and you need funds to recover from that, it's not the same as making more or less an advance or a present payment on your debt. So, the connection is to the loss, not, so if you're repaying your mortgage the whole time, we're not looking to make the next payment. I believe that's what that's meant. But I agree with you that that perhaps can, and perhaps tomorrow, for one, we can, that will come up in the webinar, and if we need to provide some clarification, we could do that, too. Does that make sense, that that's what we meant by that? Okay.
I think so.
Okay. And then another thing that it says also is that grant application for building improvements must be submitted by the owner of the property. But then in the upper area, it says, "For equipment improvements..." I mean, if you're making improvements in your unit, you have to give permission from the owner to do that?
If it's, if it's a building improvement. So, you know, personal property wouldn't necessarily be, you know, there's a line where it's still considered personal versus being a capital improvement into the property. So, I think that, you know, we want, if it's going to be something that improves the building itself, that the owner would really be the one doing the applying for that, even though it may be beneficial to the tenant.
And the comment regarding capital buildings, we are talking about...
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you, sir. Thank you.
The comment about capital building, that you're making reference to building capital for the business?
You mean in the top paragraph?
Yes.
The general... I think it'd be capital building or equipment improvement. So, that would be, a capital building improvement would be, the owner would have to sign off on it. If it's equipment, it doesn't have to be, it could be, but...
I was kind of looking at that, because capital is spelled with an A and not an O. It would mean that you're building capital for your business, as far as creating revenue for your business, that the funds can be used to create revenue that was lost, and possibly creating a fund, so that you would have funds in the future, so that your business doesn't slide back into...
I, that would be a reserve, and we're not looking to fund reserves. Correct? Are you going to participate in the webinar tomorrow?
Yes, I am.
Okay, good.
Yes, I am.
And then there can always be, there'll be contact information given out, so that if you have specific questions, then they'll go to the consultant or the town, whichever one.
Okay. Now, will there also be a copy of the covenant that's between the grantees and the town, given out, so that that can be reviewed?
That's something that has to be worked on now. That's the next project. I'm not, have not done that yet.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gross? I almost didn't recognize you with the haircut.
Thank you. I had a wedding, so I figured I'd clean up. Nobody liked the ponytail. So, question in here, I thought that the council at one time had spoken about that the organizations had to be from Wallingford. And not-for-profits, it says, must currently serve the residents of Wallingford, and must have done so since 2019, which is, but this means that any national organization technically that serves a Wallingford resident can come in here and ask for money. Am I wrong?
I think you're not wrong.
So, so then how are you going to notify, because there was notification, how are you going to notify organizations that deal with Wallingford residents that are not based in Wallingford, to give them a fair chance to apply for the grants? And is the grant still the way you did it, 50/50? So, that means you're going to make, for the not-for-profits, a smaller pie for Wallingford-based organizations, if out-of-town organizations come in, or national organizations come in?
If they're serving the town residents, then they should be able to have notice, because they have a presence here, and therefore, they would have become, have knowledge of the program through all the advertisements that's going on.
an answer from that, second is, if in here, I don't know what the application, I didn't see it. So, if you've received PPP money and other monies, you can still qualify for this money also?
Yes, there cannot be a duplication of funding, though.
What does that mean?
It's a federal, well, you can't get money for something that you got funding for through one of those other programs.
That doesn't, and I saw some head shake up there. Those monies were kind of blanket. They were just lost. I mean, you were able to go in and get money at PPP, and you didn't have to explain what you were technically using the money for. It was kind of a blanket-type thing. So, so if I received $100,000 from PPP and some other organizations from the government, even state, because this is federal money that we're talking here, that trickle-down through the state to us, how do you, because if there's enough applications and the money's becoming tight, do you knock out those people who've received other money? How do you do this?
Part of the evaluation is the discovery, the release of information by the applicant as to any money received. So, if they say they have $100,000 in losses, and through other means, they receive $95,000, that would leave $5,000 that they potentially could receive from us. But they're supposed to indicate what they received in the way of any grants or assistance from other sources.
Okay. So, it's the loss in one year, or is it the loss cumulatively over three years? Because you could have a profit in 2020 and a profit in 2022 and a loss in 2021. Or pick any year you want.
I think a lot of this, if there are questions, can certainly be dealt with at the webinar, and if there are questions following that, our consultant is available, and that's when it should be dealt with.
All right. It was on the agenda, but I'm still confused about the out-of-town money. That's very confusing. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. I'll bring it back to the council. Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Janice, I'm looking at the document, I have a document that's titled Town of Wallingford American Rescue Plan Grants Review Committee, and it has to do with the, we created the committee and the criteria. Do you recall that?
Yeah, I did, I brought what's on the agenda, just the evaluation sheet, so...
Understood. So, I'll, this is going to be, so I'm looking at that criteria. So, one of the things on here is, is applications will be reviewed and evaluated after the deadline date for receipt of applications based on the following criteria. One of those things is documentation to support amount requested. So, on the score sheet, I'm looking at the one, well, it would, it would apply to actually both. How is that scored? I mean, I guess it's subjective, right? So, it really depends. So, let me go on to another one. Viability of business or nonprofit. I couldn't glean anywhere in the scoring sheet for either one, how a member of the... I couldn't glean anywhere in the scoring sheet for either one how a member of this committee would score what they thought about the viability of the business or nonprofit.
Well, it is on the business sheet. I don't... How are they supposed to...
But ultimately, the committee is supposed to...
Yeah. At some point in time, you're going to have to make a decision, you know, the person applying it may be a pie-in-the-sky type project or something. I mean, I... I mean...
And that's the project itself. I got it. So you need your documentation, budget. This is what you're going to do. This is who you're going to... You know, but that's different from viability of business or nonprofit. That's all that sentence says. So that's something different from the project. So you may have one business that's been open for a couple of years, right? And you're comparing that perhaps to a business that's been in this town for 50 years. I would arguably say that one has a different viability level. And I'm looking at the score sheet, and I couldn't see where I would score that.
Yeah. And I think it's in there... We wouldn't want these funds to go to a business that looks like it's on the verge of collapse. This $25,000 grant is not going to save somebody who's on the verge of collapse, not likely. So to give the committee some room to make that judgment, this is all about making a judgment, right? Because if it's all straightforward, you don't need a committee. You just figure out if they check all the boxes properly, then you get the grant. So that was the intent of trying to come up with some language that gives them that. And it will be a judgment that they make based upon the information that they have.
Understood. Where would one reflect that on the score sheets that are presented to us? I've got two different companies. One's been open for two years. One's been open for 50 years. I believe as a committee member that one perhaps is a more viable company based upon what they do in the community, that kind of stuff, and their past record. I don't see anywhere on these score sheets where I would reflect that disparity. That's my point.
Well, at this point in time, we haven't made a decision that we want them to be ranked, someone being preferable over someone else. That could be done. You may want to see how many applications come in to make that determination. So if I'm scoring someone on the viability, so on the business evaluation, that's part of the 60 points, I'm not going to decide that one person is more viable than the other. I'm making an independent of the application in front of me. I'm making that decision as to, am I satisfied that this business is viable? I'm not comparing them to the next applicant. They're standing on their own.
Well, I disagree.
I'm sorry?
I disagree. Because we've already decided that that is a criteria. So...
We already decided what is a criteria?
I'm looking at the document that we approved. It says, "Applications will be reviewed and evaluated after the deadline date for receipt of applications based on the following criteria."
Right.
And there are seven bullets.
Right. But we... You've not made a decision that you're going to pick somebody over somebody else, that you're going to compare and see which one, you know...
But once again, the score sheet has to reflect that. Because otherwise, you're just going to say, we're not going to score... We're not going to score this particular business because certain people on the committee don't think it's viable. That's not fair. I think you have to have some sort of a ranking for businesses.
Yeah. I don't think this council... I don't recall any conversation where you wanted the committee...
Well, then what does this mean?
To rank people and decide who's more worthy of somebody else. If that's the case, then you got to tell me that because that's not...
I'm looking at this language that we approved.
Yeah.
It's bullet number five. It says, "The viability of business or nonprofit." It's on there. It's already been decided. So how else do you...
You don't compare them to the next applicant. You decide... You look at a business, and if I'm on the verge of collapse, you're going to say, I shouldn't get any... I shouldn't get the points for that because by $25,000, it's not going to help me.
Wait a second. That's my point. There are no points on the score sheet.
Yes, there is. It's part of the 60.
Where is it?
And the grant will assist the applicant in sustaining its viable business and is not a temporary fix.
Wait a second. No, no, no. Hold on a second. Which... Okay. So you're looking at...
I'm looking at what I gave you for tonight's agenda.
I got it. No, I got it. You got two different documents. So you're looking at on the business application...
Correct. That's where I am at the moment, yes.
Okay. Because the word viability does not even appear on the other document.
All right. Well, that goes one to my point that with respect to a nonprofit asking for a grant specifically for the loss to the organization, that's why I wanted them coupled with a business evaluation form because I thought that was more appropriate. When you get to the program evaluation, then the conversation switches because you're talking about the goals of the program being, you know, addressing needs of Wallingford residents who are in most need, that they have experience running the program, that the budget makes sense, that...
It has nothing to do with viability. I'm just... Can we just...
Because it's program-oriented.
That's not what this says. It doesn't say the viability of the program. It says viability of business or nonprofit.
Now, you know what? I... You know what? I give up.
Okay.
I really just give up.
I'm just trying...
So these are my proposed revisions. It's not perfect. Every time we have a conversation about it, you could make 10 changes to that. I'm more than happy to make the changes that the council decides to do. This is my proposal at this point in time.
I think we have to deal with this... Either we're going to take it out, which, I mean, it's part of the criteria that we have decided that these things are going to be evaluated on.
I mean, when you're talking about a program, so we want... Okay. What?
We're talking about... This bullet does not say anything about programs. It says viability of business or nonprofit.
Okay. I'm on the evaluation sheets. I'm on the agenda item. I don't...
So... And I'm looking at what this evaluation sheet is supposed to be rendered based upon is the criteria. We said this is the criteria. These are the score sheets. That's what's before us. It's the score sheet. So in that 60, it says sustaining its viable business. So that's making an assumption that they are viable already within that score. So if the determination is that by the group that this is not a viable business, then it's a zero of the 60?
It might be.
Okay. Well, I'm just trying to... I think it would be more opening to businesses and nonprofits if there was like 10. 10 points attributable to viability. And then you're scored on that. Because otherwise, if any business is determined by some members of this committee, because there's not one person scoring this, this is 10 people, you're going to have very diverse types of businesses that they... They're minus 60 out of 100. That's not... I don't think that's an appropriate way to deal with this. So since the criteria is there, I think that it would be appropriate for the group... We've already told them they have to evaluate that to score based upon that. And I guess that applies to both businesses and nonprofits, which I mentioned before, viability doesn't even appear on the nonprofit score sheet. So I don't know how to deal with this issue. I don't know if I'm dealing with this as an issue, so...
If they had received any of the other types of funding, that they weren't going to be eligible to even put in an application, did that change along the way or am I just not remembering it right?
My recollection is that it was to be supplied for consideration by the review committee.
So they would only have to identify, yes, I got it, and then the committee could still...
I got it. This is how much.
Right. And then the committee could still decide yes or no based on criteria. Okay. Are there still... Are they still eligible under the understanding that if all of the applications that scored 100 are out of the way, then they can be considered in a pool of 80? I mean, how does that scoring work? Do they need 100 to move forward? Or is it... Is the... Is there a scoring... I'm trying to understand what that scoring means.
Well, we never really actually had a detailed conversation about that. So I would say somebody who scored an 80 qualifies. Like I said, we've never talked about any cutoff. I mean, I would think that... Or ranking. And it may be that we need to kind of wait and see what is there. I don't know. We haven't talked about doing that. Certainly, I would say 80 is someone who qualifies for the grant. I think someone who, you know, maybe we... Maybe the council should consider a passing number. We've never talked about it.
Well, I guess that's where I'm kind of going with this. Because throughout all the different discussions, I was always under the understanding, and again, maybe incorrectly so, they had to meet all of these requirements. We have the first one as required, and I thought that all of these elements had to be met. And then they get... They get the... They go through the process of being reviewed after they've done all of this. So I guess my concern would be is that if you've got someone that lands with an 80 and someone with a... I don't see how this would work. Like, I would think that everybody that met all four of the criteria perfectly, when all these people would have 100, have to go through the system and technically be approved first before we could even look at anybody with a lesser score. Because if somebody wasn't going to be able to complete their project in 12 months in my scenario, got an approval for funding, and someone that hit all the marks and they're at 100 dozen, I think there's going to be a problem. And...
You know, that's... I mean, and we really haven't had this conversation, and we should have that conversation. And, you know, perhaps I can ask the consultant for other examples and some advice on that because, I mean, those are good points. But, you know, if you have to get 100, I...
It's not so much you got to get 100. I thought we had to make all this evaluation criteria was everything. If I've got a project that can't be done, it's going to be done over the next 24 months, then I don't meet the criteria for this. And I thought that's what the original outline was.
Well, yeah, that actually is one suggestion is to remove the points.
I mean, I... I don't... I mean...
It is something that occurred to me as I was trying to draft this.
Yeah. Well, I don't want to... I want this done tonight. I don't care what we need to do. I want this done tonight. And I'm real flexible as long as we're all in agreement that if we're going to use a point-ranked basic system here, that everybody that gets a perfect score, which to me means they are... They're meeting all four criteria perfectly, every single thing the way that it's outlined, then those people go first. And then anybody else that's got 90 or 80 gets considered going down. I'm okay with that because I do not want to see this go past today. But I would really rather say there's going to be a lot more applications than there is money, and I think they need to meet all four of these tiers. Both of them, the business grant one and the nonprofit one. But I'm flexible. I want this done tonight. So we can discuss it up here, and I'm not hard and fast either way. The only sticking point for me is going to be if somebody doesn't... Someone that scores 100 doesn't get funded and someone less than 100 does. I'll be real upset with that. But I am not going to stop this tonight. I want this done. I want this process to move forward. So if we can clear that up as a group, that'd be awesome. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the time.
Counselor Tieda.
Just deciding if I want to say anything or not. I think there's an issue because, you know, we have an applicant who said he's confused about it. We had two members of the committee who are going to be evaluating who seem confused about it. The council seems confused. So we're kind of setting this up for failure at this point. So I have concerns with the criteria still... Not with the criteria... I'm sorry. With the forms that we're looking at. And to Mr. Gross's question earlier, we did discuss at a meeting, I'm not sure if you were there, about organizations outside of Wallingford, as long as they serve Wallingford. It was one of the reasons I voted no. I'm concerned about national organizations possibly getting this. The example I brought up at the meeting, I believe, was an organization like Planned Parenthood that's controversial. And if they come in and they say that they serve Wallingford residents, which I'm sure they do, if they score 100, now what happens when a small business in town maybe scores an 80 and gets knocked out? And then, you know, we find out that we gave money to an organization like that, that I'm sure a lot of people would be upset about. So it did come up. Again, that was one of the reasons I voted no for the way it's structured. But I do think we need to get this scoring understood for the sake of the committee and to address the issues that were brought up tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Laffin.
Thank you. Viability, to me, is a yes or no question. Is it viable, yes? Is it viable, no? The same as eligibility is listed as another bullet point in that... On the criteria, the eligibility qualifications are not scored in the scoring rubric. Do they meet the eligibility requirements? If so, they proceed. Are they viable, yes? Are they viable, no? That may be completely the opinion of the review board. That's fine. That's what they were appointed for. The scoring thing, to me, was always as a reference guide or a system for the review board to look at and see. I think it's likely, as Counselors Andrea had said, that if somebody scores 100, that they're going to get the money. Or at least they're going to then have to review all of the people that got 100. And then what happens? If you still have some room, then you can move down to the 80s or the 90s, whatever it is. Again, I'm putting a lot of that faith and trust in the members of the review committee. That's what they were for, to review and make a recommendation. The out-of-town-based businesses that came up, there are a lot of organizations that don't have an office in Wallingford. Maybe they have one in Meriden or North Haven, and they serve Wallingford residents. The same thing for Wallingford. Masters Manor is largely or all solely based in Wallingford, and they serve the surrounding communities. If an organization that does not have an operating office or address in Wallingford can show to the committee and then the council how they would spend, I don't know, $20,000 on bettering the people of Wallingford, then it's great, then good. I think that's as simple as it gets. And if they don't hear about it, then they're not involved in the community enough to know. I mean, aside from the countless meetings, the... All the emails and social media that Counselors Andrea is even a part of, there's a... There are a thousand ways to hear about this. Those are the three things that came up, so that's all I'm going to hit on right now. Thanks.
Counselor Allenson.
Thank you. Attorney Small. Was this rubric or this scoring system created with the chair and UHY? Or did you just kind of come like... Like use what we had previously talked about and then like throw it out here so that we could, you know, talk through and workshop the change? like, throw it out here so that we could, you know, talk through and workshop the changes?
So, you had previously approved the one, the other ones.
Yes.
So everything, you've approved everything. So, in having a conversation with the consultant and the chairman, the chairman started asking questions about the evaluation, like we're doing tonight. And the more you talk about it, the more you say, well, wait a minute, how is this supposed to work? And so, they were all good points. So, the three of us talked about it, I made the changes, I did ask for any input they had into the changes I made. I don't remember if it was with them that we talked, or maybe it was, actually, that, you know, you could eliminate the numbers, and say to the committee, these are the criteria we want you to consider and be satisfied, this applicant can establish all these things. That would be an alternative to this. I didn't write it that way, but that was something that was discussed. So, I do believe this is a better version of the evaluation criteria, but, you know, just in this conversation alone, you start asking questions, you start thinking about it, and you're saying, well, wait a minute, how is that supposed to work, and is that really what we want? And so that's why it's back here, because I, I do think this is an approved version, but it doesn't have to be the final version.
Thank you. So, I also agree that it's concerning that two people who are on the committee haven't talked to the chairman of their committee regarding maybe some changes that were proposed, because if I saw this before me and then had questions, normally I would ask Chairman Servoni, you know, like, what happened? Or at least when I was on Board of Ed, I would ask my chairperson, Mrs. Levesque, I'm not really sure I understand this before the meeting, I'd like to just understand where some of this came from. So, I also find it concerning that 20% of the committee doesn't understand what happened. Viability of businesses, I'm fine with that being, with that being a criteria, the problem is that it's subjective. These aren't publicly traded companies, these are small businesses. They're our neighbors running businesses in our community. It's not, it's not for us to necessarily decide what the market is going to support in the next five to 10 years. I could have been in business with a store that sells VCRs and record players, and we've had a surge in record player sales in the past few years, as vinyl has kind of made like a semi-comeback, but the business might not have been necessarily super profitable. So, why would I say that a small bakery or a hair salon is, is less deserving after being created for two years than something that has been in business for 50 years? We can't look at longevity anymore, we have to look at just sheerly, what is the product that is being proposed here? And what these are, we are not here to decide whether a business is going to be in business in five years, we are here to decide, or they are there to decide, based on their own value statement of rubric and scoring system, how much they can support an individual project or proposal that a business has put before them. It is not a complete analysis of the business, because we are not here saying that we need to fund the business. We're supporting a portion of the business that is being proposed. So regardless of how we feel about viability, if we want to put in a five to 10-point score based on have you received funds, so that automatically it knocks down, if somebody has received funds, it puts them into the 95% bucket, so that it's reviewed at a later time, but, you know, and they don't end up in the 100% bucket if we were to go with a model like Counselor Andrea proposed. You know, I look at these rubrics from an evaluation standpoint as a preparation point. So when we walk into a meeting, we say, you know, I've read whatever supporting documents I have, you know, based on what I've read and prepared for today's conversations with the business owners, if that's the way that we're going, or based on my conversations with my fellow committee members. I want to be prepared with this statement of where I'm starting, and as more questions are answered, my rubric scale may change, but this is a value assessment to the community, it isn't a viability assessment to the community. I, I do think that the funding portion, sorry, just to tap back into that, should be, the previous, the previous relief portion should be just a bucket, even if it's a small bucket, because I realize that some companies didn't get enough to continue to sustain them, and that some companies may come back if we do a second round of these, of these evaluations. So, and then finally, every business should be judged on its own merit. It's, we're not here to compare one business to another, we're here to listen to our community partners and our community members about their individual products and their individual needs. We are not here to say, well, I really like this other project, so I'm going to score this one less positively because I don't agree with it, or because I want this other person to be prioritized over them. Everybody should be evaluated on their own, on their own merits, and this, you know, it kind of enters into the equality versus equity conversation. So, I do think that that, maybe as a counsel, or as, as Counselor Fishbein, is a member of that body, so is Mr. Gross, if these conversations are had, and, and these are, these are points of discussion, as the committee is entering these workshops, I don't think it should be super hard to say, I don't want to prioritize one over another. If I look at everything on its own value, I can, I can evaluate what, how I feel about whether or not this is a viable project or a viable proposal. I also do agree that timeframe should come into play somewhere. Completed within 12 months may be a bit short, I'm just sorry, I have my notes on one, and now I'm stealing his. But, again, I think that a lot of people are going to need this before 12 months. Like, I think that it will be in and out in many cases, because there is true suffering going on in the business and nonprofit community. So, I do think that 60 and 50-point buckets might leave a little bit, a little bit too subjective, because somebody really can, like, can really mark down a project in favor of another, if that's the way that they're going. Again, I am of the same mind as Counselor Laffin, I trust the committee, I trust our appointees to do the right thing, this is why we have a body of 10 doing this, but these are all just points that I'd like to highlight, that we did keep in mind while we were going through these discussions up until this point. So, I guess my, I would, I'm not really sure that I'm ready for a motion, because I don't really have it, like, really worked out yet, but my two proposed items would be to add a small bucket of five to 10 points based on prior provision of funds, and I think that's really all right now, that, and I would like it to come out of the 50 to 60-point buckets that are in there presently. And that's it, thank you.
Counselor Fishbein.
So this 10% of the reviewing committee has spoken to the chairman with regard to these issues, and the response has been, it's for the council to determine, that's why we're here tonight. When we say that everyone should be evaluated on their own merits, yes, if this is rainbows and unicorns, and we had $100 billion, we would not have to compare projects, groups, but ultimately, that's what we're going to have to do. At some level, that's going to have to happen, that's the reality of this. Every committee that I've ever been involved with that has to do with grants, usually you give almost the, the whole amount that's asked to the perfect scorers, and then you reduce based upon points. There was a proposition before to get rid of the points, I got to say, that's impossible with this scoring, because so much of this is subjective. And if we look at, you know, the proposed budget is appropriate for the request and supported by documentation. Well, you might have two different groups. You might have, you know, the Y that has the Outward Bound program, you know, in the, I think it's called Outward Bound, something like, in the summertime, right? Program that's been, you know, run, you know, for years and years, and has demonstrative experience and success and documentary backup. And you have another group that, you know, is viable in the community, but they'd like to have a literacy project. They've never done it before, it looks like a good project, they have no documentation. The two are totally different. They may both be viable, but to take the scoring out and just to give them both a checkmark... Run the program. Take the same example, two programs, one, you know, they're both great programs, but one has the demonstrated success, you're going to give the other one probably a lower score. Ultimately, you're going to have to compare the two. And to Counselor Andrea's point about the, you know, 100 to 80, you know, he took out the proposed timeline, but let's make it even a little bit different. Let's score them, it's the 60 and the 20, top and bottom, but then the determination that the proposed budget is not appropriate for the request, and is not supported by documentation, they would get a zero for that, they end up at the same 80. So now, those two groups are given an 80, and you have one group that cannot demonstrate through their budget that it is a program that is possible, and it's... But, and ultimately, you're going to end up at some level saying, you know, comparing projects. I don't know how you don't end up there, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What, what we have before us is a version of what, at least in education, we call a rubric. Rubrics are scoring, scoring tools. And, and what's missing in this document, these documents, I was going to say is, but I think I should say are, are the criteria for the score. In other words, it's one thing to have five categories, and let's say each category's worth 20 points, but then you need to have four columns, or three columns, you need to have specific criteria that says, this is a 20, this is a 15, this is a 10, this is a 5. Otherwise, you're not able to explain to the student why they got a D. You can't just say, well, because I didn't think, I didn't think you did a 20. What do you mean, I didn't do a 20? Well, because you, you didn't A, B, C, D. In other words, what we're doing here, and Counselor Fishbein brought up some good points, and had me thinking, are we asking our review committee to make value judgments? And, to a degree, we are, but a value judgment is not necessarily a judgment of eligibility, it's, it's almost a judgment of, you're, you're almost talking about worth. In other words, I don't, we might, we, if we're not careful, people might get into a situation where they're making a judgment on what they think about the actual business itself. And not separate from viability, you know? And you, you want to avoid that. You don't want to be saying, I think what you do for the community is more important than what he does for the community, even though you've demonstrated the same need. You don't want to do that. That's something we should be careful about, but to get back to my original, I, I think it's going to be very difficult to administer these score sheets without providing the guidelines for what exactly is a 60? What is a 50? You're, you're, believe me, it's, you're going to be arbitrary, you won't have any other way to do it. You're going to arbitrarily say, I don't think they quite pulled it off, so I'm going to give them a 40, and someone else will say, well, I'll give them a 50. Why, what does everybody think? Let's give them a 55 or 45, but no one could say why. So, we, we should think about that. I'd like to approve these two, but we, we have time before these are used? So, because you're going to, the applications are going to start coming in, maybe we should talk about preparing some more specific rubrics for establishing what those numbers, scores are going to be. That's something we should talk about. I had a couple of other questions, and this might have come up, once we were talking about a nonprofit organization, perhaps, that is organized in another community, and if this came up, I apologize for forgetting, but have we talked about, what if someone gets ARPA money from another community? Are we asking for that? Does that come under the bigger umbrella of anything you received? Because ARPA money is starting to be put out.
Yes, it's part of the application.
But, how is the committee to look at that? If we see an organization that does, helps Wallingford residents to a degree, and we say, that's, they're doing something good for people in Wallingford, but they just, they got $100,000 from North Haven, they got $50,000 from New Haven, in ARPA money, forget everything else.
Right.
Something in my head tells me that that needs to be weighed more heavily than other relief, because it's literally ARPA money. You know what I mean? Someone who's received ARPA money in another community, that somehow has to be counted against them in our community. And the last one was, and we're all aware of this question that's arisen from a, someone who's written to us, but did we, had we considered, or what was our thought pattern, or process, about businesses that may have opened after 2019? Because I didn't find anything in the ARPA letters and guidelines that specifically ruled out, unless I missed it.
They have to have had existed.
So that's in the ARPA rules?
If that's in the application.
Because I wasn't sure if I saw that.
Well, you can't, if you weren't there, then you didn't suffer.
Okay, that's...
The whole point is...
Is that written, though?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure, because someone can say, I can, I started a business, and because of COVID, I just couldn't make it work. So we have that legitimate argument to make to people? Okay, thank, thank you, I just want to be straight on that one. I'm all set, thanks.
Counselor Andrea.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, with all the discussion of the points up here, I'm, I'm a little bit more comfortable with it for a couple of different reasons, but I, I want to bring up a couple of quick examples. So I'll go to Counselor Fishbein, since you're on the committee. The example that you, you used, an alternate example, when I used the one with the 12-month timeline, and generating 80 points from that one, and you, and, and then the one that you did was, the proposed budget wasn't appropriate, so you're going to minus out that. So if you, if your committee has both of those applications at 80 points, I would assume that you're going to take a vote, and you need seven votes to take an action on whether you're going to approve one, other, or both. I would assume that the weight on that one needs to be... I would assume that the weight on that one needs to be heavier. I mean, if the budget isn't appropriate for the request and the documentation isn't available, then how do you approve that in totality? So I would think that even though you've got two 80s in front of you, if there are seven people on that committee that go, yeah, that's okay still, then I'm gonna call the question the entire committee. Because that's, that's the entire reason for you guys sitting there. So I would hope that that's the charge that someone on that floor would take. Hey, listen, they both got 80s, but somebody should bring that up. But I would like to kind of address the point scale that Counselor Testa brought up and maybe just have Janice can, you know, I don't know if you're gonna be the one that's gonna be making these changes, but maybe there ought to be a deduction element. In other words, we, we don't want to see a snare, like when you're bidding in an auction, you don't want to have people that are bidding on a very large item by, by going up an increment of a dollar. Maybe this is the same thing we should be doing here. If there's going to be reductions in any of these buckets, they should go by elements of, I don't know, five points apiece. Because you don't want to have somebody that would have otherwise scored 80, I'm 60 or something on one element, they got a 59. If you feel like dinging them, ding them at a five-point element and drop them. That way, we're not, the committee's not gonna have to look over these things and go, well, this one's a 67, this one's a 68, what's the nuance in here? I, I think if we're gonna be, if the committee's gonna be deducting points, they should do it at an element rate of five points per, I don't know, consideration factor until they get to zero or whatever the element is. So I think that might ought to be considered for the criteria as well. So those are my comments on those two elements. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Fishbein.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Something that Counselor Testa brought up was the getting ARPA money from another municipality. I would, concerned with that is, what if they just have an application that's pending with another municipality? You know, that, you don't know the outset, you know, so, you know, perhaps that's an additional consideration. With regard to what Counselor Zandry just said, I guess what you would do then with this is you would scale it, you would say that points are based upon five-point increments. So it'd be, you know, five to whatever round number. But that being said, because of your concern with regard to the 2020, therefore the 80 possible for both, and your desire to weight that middle one higher, I think it would be appropriate to make that a 30 and the last one a 10. Because the last one, you know, any project that I can reasonably think of that doesn't involve infrastructure is probably completeable within 12 months. But there's not a lot of control sometimes over that. You know, you may have manpower issues and that kind of stuff. So you're always gonna have the representation, the project can be done within 12 months. But certainly, if the budget is just a no-go and there's no documentation, it doesn't matter about the timeline. So perhaps it makes sense to have the middle one be at a 30, the bottom one at a 10, still up at a 100. Those are my suggestions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carmody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too wanted to just echo some of the comments of Counselor Testa. And to just get a clarification, Counselor Testa said, you know, there is significant amount of time for us to adjust these rubrics. Are we trying to make the adjustments tonight and vote on them tonight? Or are we gonna have Attorney Small edit them and bring them back to us next, next meeting?
It depends on the council's pleasure, but it might be more efficient if we have Attorney Small try and smith out what we complicated for her and bring them back to us.
And one comment I also just wanted to make, I know that in other towns, nonprofits who have applied for ARPA funds have been restricted to spending those funds in that town. And, you know, that's, I don't know if we've done that here, but I think that's something that we should consider. And aside from that, I did want to make a little PSA announcement, if it hasn't already been made. But, you know, our portal was open yesterday, so people can go online and apply for the ARPA funds already. And they close December 9th. And then on Wednesday, the 12th, from 1:00 to 2:30, we have our webinar. And I think that would be a good program for all of those who are interested in applying to attend. And I did want to just say thank you to Janice Small for all the work she has done on, on this project.
Thank you for that public service announcement. Counselor Laffin.
Yes, as Counselor Carmody, the, our rules say that it should be for the benefit of Wallingford residents. I imagine that is also the case for the town. And so my comment was gonna be in response to the earlier questions that I imagine those, that is the case in the other towns as well. I don't think Meriden was giving away money for the, an organization to spend it in Wallingford, but more or less, you know, I'm sure they'll disclose it during the process. And the, I would be careful with the, we have significant time because the council's definition of significant time, I think, is not an appropriate one to apply in any situation, let alone this one with a deadline of, you know, in two months. So that's it. Thanks.
Counselor Allenson.
I did just want to make one, raise one point, which is from the nonprofit, I guess, and business project perspective. If, from a project perspective and a program perspective, it may be difficult for them to secure labor if they're not giving it a year. So I would just say, you know, I wouldn't go too much lower than, you know, within 12 months of, of, you know, filling a position associated with the project. I don't know exactly how to, like, wordsmith that, but, you know, they're not gonna be able to hire somebody in advance of getting, getting the funding approved, but also they're not, there's some time that will need to take place in between securing the funding and hiring, training, and then implementing. So I, like, it's just one thing that I wanted to make sure that when we look at 12 months, we're not looking at it as a, like, super strong sticking point because I realize that there's a timeline by which this needs to be spent, but it isn't actually 12 months. It's 2024. So hopefully, you know, that puts things into perspective there. And that's literally all I have. Thank you.
That's all I have from the council.
But one point, do you agree with me that the nonprofit's request for losses would be evaluated however we end up, the same way as the business? Or do you want me to create something separate for that type of loss for a nonprofit? Because the other evaluation is specifically for a program that they're offer, they want to offer, as opposed to getting a grant for damages, economic damages?
I mean, my initial reaction is, I don't think you need to complicate it that way.
Originally, I included the nonprofit economic damage request to be evaluated the same as the, as the business. But, because it's more aligned to that, but I can create it as a separate thing, but it's not a program analysis. It's a, it's a loss analysis. So, I mean, I can create something separate for that for you to take a look at, if that's what you want. And I just want, I just want to clarify, when I had this discussion with the consultant and the chairman, I certainly didn't go into that discussion thinking I was going to be revising these documents. So that just occurred as a result of questions that were being asked to the consultant and myself about this form. So.
That's not a bad thing, but obviously, we do need to come to an end on that. But if I can get, please get some feedback on that part with the nonprofit and the rest.
So the question becomes, you go forward with a motion on the table, or can we allow the document to develop some more? Mr. Vice Chairman.
I know that there's harm in approving as, like, we kind of leapfrog through, kind of saying that, okay, we agree that this is a good place to be as well, and then we may come back to it. The nonprofit part, talked about, it's already been a long night, but I, I almost want to say that part of it could have been too, that that was, might have been a heading issue. Some of the documents, the heading did not, was not consistent, and it may have just been struck, like, we, it came up in quick conversation, and we're like, no, that's supposed to not be there like that. And that, so then we were looking for more uniformity in that, in part of the stuff that I sent you. So that may, that it may have even just been my error, but I think that's part of what that was.
So, does that mean it's supposed to be there or not?
Others can, there was a discussion about program forward versus restitution. So I'll let, I'll let other people speak to that.
Counselor Fishbein.
So, you know, Mike, that is what we talked about, is program forward. And I would like to still be there because certainly, you know, I'm involved in at least one nonprofit that decided as a result of the pandemic to not engage in certain activities. Now, the, the group gets into evaluating whether or not. On that operational decision, I don't think we should be there. I think you're peeling back the onion that we don't want to or need to get into.
Okay, hold up. The application that you approved includes a section for a nonprofit to ask for economic loss. That's the application that's gone out.
Sure.
And then there's a second half for a program. So I'm asking about the evaluation of the economic loss portion. How, how do you want to evaluate that?
I'm, I'm just expressing, I think that's extremely difficult.
Okay, I don't, I don't, well, I don't know what I'm supposed to do.
I think they're inexplicably intertwined.
Oh, the program one?
Yes.
All right, okay.
I, I don't know how you could separate the two.
Well, because the program one is you're making a judgment that a program that's being proposed is worthy of receiving funding.
Amen.
Where an economic loss is, they suffered an economic loss and they want to replenish that loss. Those are two different things.
With two different criteria and review.
Right, so that's what I'm asking you. Can't, so you, you want a separate one?
From my perspective, I don't think, I mean, there was an awful lot of pushback about financial documents and, you know, you know, borderline discovery of what's been happening in nonprofits, that kind of stuff. We shouldn't be going there. From my perspective, we should be looking at programs that nonprofits would like to do to enrich our, our community. Is, is my perspective, just speaking for myself.
All right, I mean, I don't mean to give you a hard time. I'm just not following what it is you think the criteria for the economic loss should look like for a nonprofit. I'm not understanding that.
I think they're inexplicably intertwined. It's a project that, had the pandemic not happened, that more than likely the entity would have engaged in, and they are negatively impacted as a result of the pandemic from doing that project, that there was a glimmer in their eye, met the mission of, of the agency or, or entity. That's, that's where I'm at. Because otherwise, you end up looking at, well, did the executive director get another $20,000 during the pandemic? And then we are supplanting that, you know, that kind of stuff.
Well, that's not, that doesn't qualify.
That's potential. Well, we wouldn't be able to know that, though, without peeling back the onion. And that's.
Okay, at some point, you have to take what people are saying to you under penalty of, of false statement, that they're giving you an accurate portrayal. If you're gonna assume that everybody is giving you fraudulent criteria, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't know what to tell you. But if you're asking for, you want to tie the economic loss to a program, that's not the application you approved. My opinion. I mean, I don't have a problem taking a look at your concerns and seeing about doing something, but I don't think that's the application that's been approved and is now out there.
Your interpretation. All right. I see no other hands. There is a motion on the table, and we'll call the vote.
Can we read the motion back, please?
I moved that we approved the revisions to the ARPA application with our review evaluation documents.
And there's been no adjustments to that?
That's correct.
So just approve as, as.
For the revisions of the ARPA evaluation form.
Thank you.
Forms.
Sorry, forms.
Madam Clerk?
All set?
Yes.
Allenson.
Struggling. We're approving this as a, as the initial change, not the permanent, you know.
Well, we've proven tonight that it can come back to us.
All right, so, yes, then.
That's yes?
Yes. She said yes.
Thank you. Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
No.
Tatta?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes, motion passed. Onto item nine. Review and consideration of the evaluation of the fire department done by Shoreline Associates completed in or around 2011. Counselor Marone, your item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Joe Sutton, our fire chief. Sam Wilson, deputy fire chief.
Chief and deputy chief, thank you very much for bearing with us through all that, that discourse. I do appreciate it. So we had asked for, and you had sent us a document, a few documents, actually, one being the Shoreline assessment of the fire department from 2011, which was sort of an analysis done between the, the volunteers and the career firemen, and sort of how to, issues between the career and the volunteer firemen and how to improve the, the volunteer fire department. Subsequent to that, a member of the public sent us a report by, by Keith Schaefer that was done internally. He was a fireman in the department at one point, am I to understand, or may currently be?
Keith Schaefer is currently a lieutenant in the fire department.
Okay, okay, very good. So you're familiar with that document as well, which are sort of in the same context.
Which document is that?
Was the, he had done an analysis of the fire department entitled, Integrating, Obstacles to Integrating EMS Into the Wallingford Fire Department?
What was that dated?
My copy appears to be undated, so I can't speak for, with certainty.
I'm not familiar with that document.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. So let's focus on the document, on the Shoreline underlying analysis. So the methodology that they, they used was essentially interviews between the, the volunteers and the career firemen to determine where the deficiencies are. So there was, I found some interesting things in there. You know, when I was sort of doing my research to prepare for this item, I had looked in the, through some of the documents in the council office and found out that in 2011, and who knew, but there was a, a plan at one point to eliminate the paramedic service completely. And there was a number of letters from members of the public, sort of in support, you know, of the paramedic service. So it's funny to think in 2022 that that was even, you know, at that point contemplated. So I guess my, my question is about the, one of the items that was contemplated in that, in the Shoreline study was in having volunteers staff a full-time ambulance in the evenings. Now, that is not currently done, correct?
They're able to staff up when they can. There's a, there's a volunteer ambulance that's currently available to them, and they staff up periodically.
Okay, so when you say periodically, you just mean it's sort of as needed basis, not on a regular sort of schedule basis?
Whenever they can staff it.
Okay. Okay. All right, and so, I guess why was that before, is, you know, we had talked about, I, I had prefaced the idea of, of doing a study, which I know the, the council turned down. The methodology used in the, in the Shoreline study involved, you know, interviews with the, with the firefighters and whatnot, both volunteer and paid. Are you familiar with a letter that we got indicating, or asking us, and sort of demanding that we not speak to individual firefighters about the, the department?
I do know about it.
Letter dated August 12th. So I, I guess my concern is, obviously, we can go to, you know, you and the, and Deputy Chief Wilson to talk about issues within the, the fire department. I guess as a part-time legislator, normally what I would do is, if I had concerns with the department, I would speak to the department head, and then I might ask, you know, some of the, an employee of the department, you know, sort of from their perspective, to sort of get the 360 of what I think the issue might be. In this case, this letter says that, essentially says that the, we shouldn't be asking any questions of the, you know, individual employees of the unit, because it have, could have implications with collective bargaining. Does that, does that about make sense? Do you, you understand it?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So I, I guess where this leaves me is, I'm not sure, as a part-time legislator, where to, where to go from here with the, how I would gather more information. I guess if I feel that the, the information from individual firefighters was helpful in this regard, as it was in the, in the study performed by Shoreline.
I, I believe that, that letter would be indicating it's labor negotiation ground rules.
Right, but I mean, but virtually any question that you could ask an employee could have some implication with collective bargaining, like not knowing the issues, because certainly I haven't talked to you about it, and I haven't talked to anyone else, about the issues of, you know, that are going on in collective bargaining, right? And nor would you be at liberty to share them with us. But virtually anything I ask without knowing could sort of, you know, infringe on the, whatever could be talked about in collective bargaining, could it not?
Well, you'd have to ask first.
Ask?
Ask the question, and you'd be advised if that would be infringing on ground rules collective bargaining.
Okay. So what I'd like to do is, can I have this letter attached to the minutes of the, of the meeting, Deb?
Yes.
As a backup? Want to pass it over? So
I guess if I can't talk.
Just, just a question, what, what's being entered into the?
That was a, a letter dated August 12th that came from Dennis Chigarella to you, and then to us.
That shouldn't be entered, that's, that's, that's exempt, so it should not be entered into the minutes of the meeting.
It's exempt because?
It's legal advice.
Because, because for two reasons. It's attorney-client privilege, and it's also directs, it's directed toward collective bargaining, so it's not a public document. So by attaching it to the minutes, you're trying to make it a public document, which is inappropriate.
All right, so you said attorney-client privilege, and the other reason was collective bargaining, but the letter doesn't address any specifics of collective bargaining, and then attorney-client, so, so who, the client would be you, though, according to the letter, correct? Not us?
No, the client is the town of Wallingford.
So the letter specifically.
You sit in judgment on whether a collective bargaining agreement is approved or not, or whether an arbitration award should be appealed. You have a judgment to make with regard to collective bargaining. By state statute, you are not supposed to be involved in issues that are related to the collective bargaining until either there's agreement, or, or it comes to you as part of an official action. That's, that's by state law. So communications with regard to the collective bargaining are exempt from FOI. They're protected.
That I understand, but now this letter came to us through the town clerk, correct?
No, I believe that came separately from, from the administration.
Well, it was forwarded to us from Deb, who wouldn't be subject to either the.
Well, regardless of, it, it was probably given to her as the clerk, and then she sent it to you. But it came through her to you. That doesn't remove any of the protections with regard to that document.
So how would I, as a, how would I understand that this document was protected in any way? Because it didn't come with any kind of a marking on the, either on the letter or on the email saying that it was restricted.
But we are informing you that it is not to be released. It's not a public document. It, it is exempt from FOI.
I'm not certain that I see the, I mean, I understand that the tone of the letter is that we shouldn't, they don't want us discussing any collective bargaining issues with any members of the union, which I can appreciate and understand, and I wouldn't do that, but I guess how would I know what the, the letter doesn't state what the issues are that have been discussed, doesn't state who they, so there's sort of an, I guess my issue here is there's sort of an accusation, right? That someone has, has done something inappropriate that they shouldn't have, but I'm not sure who that individual is or what the accusation is exactly.
It doesn't matter, the lawyer is informing, advising that it's inappropriate activity, given the nature of collective bargaining.
So the, by charter, one of the functions of this legislative branch is to investigate budgetary issues within the executive branch, correct?
Well, you, you have investigatory authority with regard to more than just budgetary issues, but that, that must be looked at within the context of what is the subject matter? If some of the subject matter is at the core of a collective bargaining negotiation, then investigation would have to wait for that information to be available until there, wait until such time as there's either an agreement, or an arbitration award, or whatever. At some point, it's terminated. Then there's no longer that hanging over those issues, hanging over meaning there is a judgment to be made by the council with regard to what should be the contract, language in the contract between the union and, and the town. That's the role you play, and that cannot be jeopardized by other things.
Okay, but I'm telling you, I don't have any specific information with regard to either parties. You know, it's not like we, as a council, have met to talk about, you know, the town's position on any of these issues, or nor do I know the, the union's position on any of these issues.
But to the extent that issues are raised that are being discussed in whole or in part in collective bargaining, that should not occur until such time as the collective bargaining has been completed.
But, but how would I, I guess how would I know that an issue is being raised in collective bargaining? Because the letter doesn't identify any particular, any particular issue, it just says, don't talk about it.
Okay, as, as the chief indicated, if you ask a question, and if, to his knowledge, it's part of the collective bargaining, he would say, I can't discuss this right now because it's, it's an element in collective bargaining. You can raise a question, but where it's a collective bargaining issue, the answer would be, we can't discuss it right now.
I guess, so the, the trap for me, though, is there really isn't an issue that I could discuss that couldn't be part of collective bargaining. I mean, every, the whole, you know, the whole department is sort of subject to collective bargaining, right? Because it's work conditions, and so on.
But it's only if, if the subject matter is a particular part of discussion. If it's, if it's an element that is not part of any, of the current negotiation, then that can be answered, the question can be answered. But where it treads on ongoing discussions between union and town, then they're not, they're not supposed to be talking about it by the ground rules of the, of the specific negotiation going on. Ground rules are adopted, and typically they say, you can't discuss any of these items with any other party.
And I certainly understand how the ground rules work, I guess, I'm still not clear on how I would know, though, other than asking the chief if something was violative of the, of the ground rules.
No, you would ask, you would ask a question regarding a concern you have regarding the department. If the chief can answer, he will. If he, if he knows that that's part of collective bargaining, he will say, well, I can't discuss that right now, it's part of collective bargaining.
I guess I'm all set for now, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Counselor Zandry.
Yes, this is probably a little bit aside to the actual agenda item, but it's, it's corresponding. So we at one point had some of our, we had, we had the record journal, like we've had a standing FOI for, for our emails and whatnot, and that, that message, which Counselor Marone wanted to have added to the, to the minutes of the meeting, we're now being told can't be because of that, but had this, when did, we got that email in the summertime, was it, or was it in September?
Dated August 12th.
August, so I mean, if, if, if they had maintained their standing, hey, I want the email strings for August and September, they would have picked that up.
If it had been released, they would have. They, it shouldn't, according to the FOI protections, it shouldn't be released.
All right, then I'm, I'm going to kind of have to go along with, 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 I don't know, stating the obvious. We get, we get a lot of email, none, none of us up here have, have a town-centric email. We've got Gmail, Comcast, I run mine off the Microsoft servers. This information gets passed to us without any kind of notification that this is internal only. I mean, I, I mean, we, we've got to have a little bit more information in these emails as to what should not be shared beyond the council.
We will make better effort to see that it's marked confidential or whatever, but it doesn't change the facts. And we're all held to know these things, it's state law.
If, if I get an email that doesn't say that it's confidential, I am not magically going to know that. And I, I, that's why there are headers and footers in legal emails that go back and forth normally, and we need to start doing that.
I agree with you, however, it doesn't change state law. It's one of the great dangers of emails.
There's also a lot of great dangers for packets to get left at my house if somebody walks by, Amazon packages take a walk, so can the stuff that gets left at our front doors. I don't want to, I don't want to belabor particular issues, I, all I'm asking for, and, and you've agreed, and, and I'm not saying that you didn't agree, I, I don't want to be a follower, and I don't think any of us do, of what we're not, what we're allowed to do and what we're not supposed to, but without an identifier, we don't know.
I, I agree with you, however, I still state, I think everyone has been at this long enough to know that collective bargaining issues should not be discussed beyond, or be prior to the point that those negotiations come to a close. That's, that's been as long as any of us have been here. There's no, nothing new. Collective bargaining is a protected form of communication, and that's, that's just the way it is. If they change state law, then, then it won't be that way.
I, I think we both agree, we're, we're both agreeing on parallel lines. I, I would, I just want, I would like that going forward for all of us, especially, especially under the secondary consideration that since it's not an internal email, there is no digital signing, and there's no, there's no encryption on these emails. So we have to be extra careful with those types of elements, so I, I want to kind of stress that going forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Fishburne.
Listening to all of this, one would have us believe that, I'm at Celebrate Wallingford, an officer comes up to me and says, a police officer, says, you know, it'd be nice if in the summertime I could wear cargo pants. And then the contract comes before us, and I happen to ask about cargo pants, and that's somehow violative of the law. Wrong? I don't think so. We must have notice of that. It's exactly what happened a few years ago. An officer came to me and asked about cargo pants. It was something I asked about when the contract came before, that's my job. I'm not precluded from speaking to rank and file about their concerns. I have no idea what's being talked about. We're not kept in the loop as far as what happens behind the door. We see the contract for the most part at the end. How else do I know to ask those questions unless rank and file talks to me? The letter, once again, not stamped as confidential, expresses a concern about investigation that I voted in favor of last time, and I sat here and weighed whether or not. I got to tell you, this, this letter, this obvious attempt to preclude me from doing my job, I'm more in support of this investigation. It's unfortunate, but to say to me that I can't talk to rank and file officers about their concerns in the workplace, I don't like that. It's not fair. It's not fair to us, it's not fair to rank and file officers, and fire department, members of the fire department. I don't know how else we, we advance. I disagree with, you know, certainly if we knew, talking about wage increases, you know, health insurance benefits, whether or not something in particular is covered under the policy, if we know or have advanced notice that those things are being negotiated, yeah, but to say to me that I can't discuss anything that could possibly be talked about in collective bargaining, doesn't even make logical sense. It's unfortunate we're having to have this discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mayor?
You know, we're, we're not talking about the investigation. It's not an issue. Issue involves some other communications with regard to what is going on in the collective bargaining. No, you don't know what those issues are, and if someone comes to you and wants to talk about them, I understand that, but then they are violating. Whoever is doing that with the knowledge that is in collective bargaining, they are violating. Basically, when you are in judgment ultimately upon the agreement, that's called prohibited practice, as the lawyer pointed out. No, you, you, you can't know all of the things, no. But you also want to be careful not to be drawn into this before the point at which you are asked to make a final judgment on it. If, if there's an investigation that's necessary, that, that's, okay, that could happen, but if there are elements in the investigation that are currently under negotiation, probably the investigation will not involve those things until such time as the collective bargaining is completed.
I see no other hands on the council. Counselor Marone?
Very quickly then, Chief or Mayor, when would we anticipate that this, worst-case scenario, when would we anticipate that this contract would be approved, or this process would be finalized?
Currently, it's heading towards arbitration. They'll be picking some dates probably at the end of October, I would say, probably a couple of months out.
Thank you very much.
Anything else from the council? It should not be part of the record. Powers and Duties in Connecticut General Statute. Counselor Todd, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Chief, Deputy Chief. This item, we did receive a memo from the Law Department, from Attorney Small, after the item was put on the agenda, so I just wanted to bring that to our attention because it's not included with my backup, but I do have multiple pages of backup that I hope everyone looked over. So the Connecticut General Statute states that, this is chapter 541, section 29-297, this talks about who appoints the local fire marshal. this talks about who appoints the local file, fire marshal. And it states that the Board of Fire Commissioners, which we don't have, or in the absence of such board, any corresponding authority of each town, city, or borough, or if no such board or corresponding authority exists, the legislative body of each city, it goes on to say that's who would appoint. So I, I was on the Charter Revision Commission, and I was the vice chair when this change was made. So back then, we changed it from the town council appointing the fire marshal to the fire chief. And I did include in the backup the minutes of that, so you can see what the Charter Revision Commission's discussion was. And also, I included the explanatory text that the public received in preparation to vote for charter revision, and number five says that the proposed revised charter provides for the appointment of the fire marshal and deputy fire marshals by the fire chief. Under the current charter, the town council makes the appointment. So I, you know, years later now, I realize that this seems to be in conflict with the state statute, which states that the Board of Fire Commissioners, or in the absence of such board, any corresponding authority, or if no such board or corresponding authority exists, the legislative body shall be who appoints. In Attorney Small's memo, she argues that any corresponding authority could be the fire chief. You know, as I read this, I'm not so sure, because it seems like every other example that they provide in the statute is a body of people, not one singular person. So a Board of Fire Commissioners, it talks about a legislative body, the Board of Selectmen, they're all boards that are appointing, not an individual person. So again, I'm not going to get into a, you know, legal argument over it, obviously I'm not a law lawyer, but my reading of it, I think we, our charter may, we may have made that change kind of in conflict with that statute. But be that as it may, I don't know if anyone else on the council wants to, you know, address that. But I, it also leads me to, you know, another question, which would be, I had heard that our fire marshal resigned several months ago. So I did ask Mr. Hutt, when I had heard that, for a list of vacancies at that time, and I included the response I received back, which is a memo dated August 5th. There is no fire marshal listed on there as a vacancy. There is an assistant fire chief, but I assume that's not the same position. So do we not have a fire marshal currently? Is that correct?
The fire marshal retired September 8th, and we are, right now, we have an acting fire marshal.
We do have an active fire marshal?
That's correct.
Okay. Is that an interim position, or that's a, that was a hired replacement?
That's an interim position.
Okay. So I believe we have statutorily a limit to get a permanent replacement, correct? Or the interim can stay?
It's not correct. It can stay as long as, until we get another fire marshal. If you read that statute, it states that as long as we have a deputy fire marshal, we do not have to comply with 180 days.
Okay. Are we searching for a permanent, or is the interim, are we not at that point yet? Is the interim just going to stay on?
I've submitted a letter. This is going to be a process that takes a while.
Thank you for that. And, the, okay, so the other issue with, that I just wanted to bring to the council's attention, maybe not an issue, but other, other item, is that back in 2014, the then council, now this was before charter revision, so this was when the council was still appointing fire marshal. But I included a letter where the council wanted to basically give their supervisory authority to the fire chief as opposed to being supervisor. So that was when the council still appointed. And then I included the minutes, the March 25th, 2014 minutes, and that's where you can see the conversation that went on. Some of you are here. But it did, it did pass seven to one with Hilda Fishbein being the one, oh, no vote. And so at that point, the council did give the supervision of the fire marshal to the fire chief. I assume that that only remains with that one council, so once a new council was elected, I think that, because it's my understanding, that it doesn't carry over to the next council. So basically, that power would have gone away as soon as the next council was sworn in. So I'm wondering if that is still now in limbo. So even though we only changed the appointing power in the charter, does the council still hold the supervisory power, is my question? I don't know if that's a legal question.
No. The charter's pretty clear on that. The fire chief hires and supervises. We are no longer involved by the charter.
So the fire chief shall appoint and may remove for cause a fire marshal and such deputy fire marshals as may be necessary, who shall exercise all duties, powers, and functions as provided in the Connecticut general statutes. In making such appointment, preference shall be given to a member of the regular or volunteer fire department of the town. So I don't read anything about who supervises. I just see appoint and may remove for cause.
The party who appoints and removes is ultimately the supervisor.
Well, that's my question. Because the council in 2014, when they were the ones to appoint, they gave that power to the chief. But I'm, I'm not so sure that that power, I mean, the charter doesn't address it. So, you know, I just read the section, it doesn't say who supervises. So I'm not sure if there's another state statute, if there's something else that addresses that. So that's, that's the question.
Oh, I'm, I'm going to defer to the law department, but if, if a position, if a supervisor has, well, if somebody has the power to appoint and remove, that person is the supervisor. That's, that's the ultimate authority. Attorney Small?
I agree with that. I don't, I don't know how anyone has the power to fire someone for cause if they're not supervising them, so I think that's part of the charter as it exists today.
I, I mean, I disagree that the charter addresses it. I don't think the charter does address that. I think we can infer, but it doesn't say it. And so if it doesn't say it, then I'm wondering if there's another spot maybe in Connecticut state law that does address that. And maybe, maybe there's not, but I just think all of these, all of these documents I provided put together kind of leave that question in my mind. And, and now that I hear that we have an interim fire marshal and we're possibly not going to be hiring a permanent one, I think it just leads to more questions than answers. That's, that's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman.
I think I heard the chief say that you're initiating the process to find a replacement for the fire marshal.
That is correct. I submitted a letter to HR.
Thank you. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, where are we on inspections? I mean, I know in the past it's been an issue. Are we up to date, or how far behind?
That's a good question, Counselor. I think it's always a challenge, inspections. I've given a directive to the Fire Prevention Division right now to focus it on multifamily homes, which is one of our highest hazards. We're doing plan reviews. Anything over 20,000 square feet goes to a third party. Right now, they're challenged, and I am concerned because we're down to two people in that division.
Okay. So I know, I, I think I recall that you're supposed to do inspections every three years? Is that?
Based on occupancy.
Okay. And in the past, it's been reported, I know when we had the hiring of the last fire marshal, when we were involved in the process, I think the report was that we were behind about 300 inspections. Where are we?
I don't have that number, Counselor. We, we are obviously not in compliance, as I know of. Almost no jurisdiction is, but we have made a lot of gains and a lot of inroads. With the acting fire marshal currently, I've directed him to reassess what we're doing and make sure that we have, put a lot of our efforts towards the inspection part of it.
Okay. And you indicated that replacement of the fire marshal who retired is going to take a while. Why is that?
Typically, with a position like that, it takes a while.
Okay. That hasn't been my experience when we were doing it, so.
It took me a year and a half to get a deputy chief. So with these positions, we're looking for the right people, and it just, just takes a while in order to go through the process.
Okay. So are we estimating a year for this? Or, I think the last time we did it, it took us two months.
I'm not familiar with the last time, but I would say conservatively, it's probably going to be six months at least.
Okay. And you have two deputies presently?
Two deputy fire marshals.
Yeah. Are they eligible to be elevated?
Currently, yes.
Okay. When you say currently, is there something that's going to change in the criteria or something, or?
No, currently, yes.
I just will express a concern, you know, about inspections and.
As well as I do.
Making this a priority. Just want to express that concern. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
In the multifamily inspections, how, how much of that is challenged by non-cooperative landlords and non-cooperative tenants?
That's a big part of it. They try to make appointments with the landlords. They don't show up, send certified mail, they get state marshal to serve them in order to compel them. So that is a challenge.
Yeah. So I do recall the last time we hired a fire marshal as a council, and Chief Struble had done the significant majority of the legwork and brought us the candidates at the very end. And I don't know how much time Chief Struble's work took before we got to the point where we were vetting the candidates to make the appointment. So that is my recollection. Counselor Morone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So when I was going through the documents from some of the old meetings, I noticed that there used to be an entry in the budget book for a fire marshal. So the fire marshal was considered a separate department at one point? Is that?
Yes.
Is that accurate?
It was.
So he had his own budget that was separate and distinct from the fire department budget? And so did that, that combined with the fire department when the supervisory authority?
When the charter, when the charter changed.
Okay. So I guess, so the, the fire marshal's job sort of runs parallel, I guess, to that of the fire department? Is that the rationale why it's all combined into one unit now?
Yes, it's part of the fire department.
So the mission, but I guess the mission of the fire marshal is sort of separate and distinct from the fire, the regular fire department then, correct?
No, that's not correct.
So the fire marshal's responsible for inspections and fire safety generally?
That's correct, and plan review.
Okay. And investigations.
Investigations.
Investigations, okay.
And enforcement.
So is there ever a scenario where the fire marshal has to investigate the fire department, say, or the actions of the fire, of individual firefighters or something, with regard to how they respond to a fire?
No, they investigate the cause and origin of a fire.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The statute sort of directs you to look internally. And I'm trying to figure out why this process, if the statute says preference to internal, why this process is supposed to take so long?
It indicates preference. It doesn't indicate that you shall. You may not have the best candidates.
It does indicate, it does indicate shall. It says preference shall be given.
Preference.
Yeah. So, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Questions or comments from the public?
Not really for you folks, for Janice. So, sorry. The, the element that was brought up earlier about the, the potential or the seeming conflict between the state statute and the, and the charter, you're satisfied that there isn't one there?
Correct.
Okay. So, I mean, I guess, I mean, that's like the legal ruling of that, but I mean, I guess if any of us feel any different, we could always make a motion at some future point to do, to do a charter revision to fix that, or change it, or clarify it better. I mean, that's the only other option. I'm satisfied with that answer, but if we feel like that that document needs to be updated, it's something we need to think about and bring it up in the future.
But to be clear, it's not, it's not that a conflict in the law is requiring it. The question becomes if that is.
We want to affect that change into the charter. It's a full, and again, you open the charter, you close the charter, you make changes that way, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Todd?
Thank you. You know, I think, also, Counselor Sandry, it, I don't know that it would require a charter change. I think if, if enough of us thought that, I guess if enough of us disagreed with Attorney Small's decision, then I think there's other avenues we could take. You know, I guess that's kind of what I was seeing tonight to see if anybody, you know, also agreed with the, with the reading or not. And, you know, certainly nothing against Attorney Small and her expertise, but, you know, this is why, this is why we have, why lawyers disagree about, you know, interpretation and wording often. And so the way I'm reading it, you know, I think it, I think we may have, you know, the charter may, I think, be in conflict, but again, if the rest of the council disagrees or does agree, I guess we can always look at it and, you know, decide if we wanted to do anything. I do know with the charter revision, I'm not, I'm not so sure that the, all the implications of the change were, were clear at that point. Again, I was on the commission, so I can take responsibility, but even looking at just a document that went out to the public, which is kind of the document that the commission all agreed this is what we're saying the changes are, it just says the appointment. And I think, I think we were all under the impression that it was simply the appointment. And now it seems like it's, there's kind of more to it than just the appointment. So that's kind of where it, where it stands at this point. Thank you.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you. I guess I, given that Counselor Todd has, you know, mentioned several times if the council wants to consider something, et cetera, I would, I would appreciate, I don't understand really the, the motive behind your question in the first place. And I'm not questioning, I'm saying, is there something that I'm not catching as to why this even came up? And in our, in your discussions, there, there seems to be an underlying implication that there is a problem somewhere and that we should be exercising authority over, or did someone just, you know, point out to you, hey, you know what? Have you seen the state law? You guys made a mistake. So is there something more I should know to be interested in this? Because I was on the council when we, when we voted to give oversight to the chief, and at the time, it was, we had a long discussion about it. I actually, one concern I had at that time, I remember bringing it up, was that, you know, what if, what if the chief has to investigate the performance of the fire department? Wouldn't that be a conflict? And it was explained to me. And it was explained to me how things work and it wouldn't be. So I actually thought of that at the time, and that just seemed reasonable to me. What also seemed reasonable to me was just pragmatic, the chief came to us and said, listen, this person's working here, I'm always overseeing what's going on, et cetera, et cetera, you come to me for recommendations, so on and so forth. It was just presented as a common sense type of change that we should consider. We talked about it and we said, it does seem to make sense. Let all of the fire, the personnel involved in fire prevention, fire protection and all that, be under one roof. And no one had any, in my, to my recollection, there was no strong objection or arguments made against it. And then, as you know, you, and you admit it, you went through the charter revision, and, because we asked, we said, listen, let's make, make the change in the charter, because we've made the change operationally, so let's all get it straightened out. So I'm just wondering why, why now, are you so concerned about it? Is there something I should know? And the other thing I would just say is, I don't think we can, we can't unilaterally do anything to change something in the charter without a charter revision. I don't think we could do anything, if we said we wanted to change it back, we couldn't, I don't think we could do anything that would, without a charter revision. What, what's that?
That's what I was going to ask.
If someone proves our charter violates the state statute, we, wouldn't we still have to do a charter revision?
Yeah.
To correct it? We still couldn't unilaterally say, we're changing our charter because someone told us, there's something in there that violates the law. I'm all about the law, but don't get me wrong. I just, I just think, I don't understand why we're wading into this. I don't see what's going on. It's, I understand there are, and have been concerns raised about various things operationally, not naive, but it's been suggested strongly, and I agree, that while we are in the middle of negotiation and heading to arbitration, it's not prudent to talk about it with anyone involved, because the things people appear to be, the concerns people appear to be raising are directly related to contract conditions. So, my, my position is, gotta wait. I'm interested too, and very interested in concerns that individuals might bring up, whatever it might be. But I think we've got to wait till this plays out before we can dig into it. So, is this an offshoot of that? I don't understand.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Please do.
Thank you. So how this happened was, one, somebody did, they sent me a copy of the state statute, and they asked me as the former vice chair of the Charter Revision Commission, if I remembered why the change happened, how the change happened, if I could give them any info in that capacity. You know, I said, it was a few years back, but let me, let me look through, I'll look up whatever I can find and let you know what the rationale was. They let me know that they had requested the minutes of the, that's actually, the initial call was because they had requested the minutes of the Charter Revision Commission, and they were not able to get them from the town, from town hall. I'm not, I believe it was the clerk's office, I'm not sure, so I said, did you look on the website? I saw that they weren't on the website either, I'm assuming because they were old. So this person said, I can't find the minutes, I'm just trying to look into this, can you help me out? So I sent the minutes, I found them in my own personal documents from Charter Revision, I found the minutes, I sent them to them, public document. I had one, possibly two conversations, and then after that, very soon after that is when we received that letter. After we received that letter, I ceased communication. I said, you know, I can't, can't talk to anybody about anything anymore, you know, I, I was told it was not anything that was an arbitration, I said, it doesn't matter, I'm not, you know, I received this letter and I'm not gonna, I did not share the letter. And so how this agenda item happened was, I felt that, as my duty as a counselor, if I wasn't allowed to talk to anybody, that I should at least do everything I could to find any documents relating to this, to my own research, and present it to everybody on the council, just as a, as doing my job as a counselor, without discussing it, without going against what the letter asked us. It was not my understanding that if any of this had anything to do with arbitration, I still don't even know what arbitration is about, I, I just wanted to do my job as former vice chair of the Charter Revision Commission, as a counselor now, to present all the information I could find, which are all public documents, and just see what the council thought about it. So that's, that's where we are.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yep, absolutely.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment about Counselor Tada's remarks about someone coming in looking for minutes? I think I know the gentleman you're speaking of, and he wanted me to find minutes at that moment at a busy counter, and I asked him to just give me a few minutes, and then I gave, called him back within five minutes, and provided the information to him as he requested. So it was a very short amount of time during a very busy day, and it was a matter of minutes. I just wanted to make that clear, I didn't refuse anybody.
Oh, yeah.
Information, if I'm wrong.
Yeah, and I'm certainly not trying to, I'm just telling you, I was told that they weren't able to get them, so certainly, Deb, I was not trying to, please blame, but...
Just wanted to...
Thank you, absolutely.
I think we're set. Mr. Chairman, I had a follow-up question. I didn't know that.
Again, and this is really less to do with you guys, it's really back to Counselor Tada, and Counselor Testa sort of brought it up, but I have the same understanding with anything that's in the charter, even if we wanted to, this is why, even though the, clearly the misspellings and the grammatical errors were cleaned up during one of the revision efforts, because we can't even go in there just to, just to clean it up for housekeeping purposes. The charter is open or the charter is closed, so when you're, when you're making your comments, there might still be things that we can do, are you suggesting that... I guess I'm asking, what are you suggesting? Because if you, it's something that you want us to consider, and it doesn't have to be an action we take tonight, but what could we do?
Mr. Chairman, may I respond?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. I, I thought, and I could be, I'm just, I'm glancing it over now, I thought that at the end of the charter, under transition and miscellaneous provisions, that there may have been a provision in there where if anything in our charter did not comply with state or federal law, that the law would, would be in effect. I could be wrong, and I'm kind of glancing through now. I know the saving clause has to do with if any of this was held invalid by a court, so I guess, in that case, if you wanted to, and I'm not suggesting we do this, but if we wanted to, I would assume we could take to court Attorney Small's decision and argue that, and then if it was found that, you know, we won, if you want to say, then I think the saving clause would supersede what's in the charter.
Well, I kind of agree with that sentiment, so if there was a section in there that says, you know, if there's a conflict, we default to the state law, we're covered, we don't need to do anything, but if it actually went to court and they said, no, your charter is wrong and it must be this, then, then to me, we would have to do charter revision, because you open it, and then anybody can suggest any change at that point.
I don't believe you have to reopen the charter, I believe that the saving clause just says that, let's see, shall not affect the remainder of this charter, nor the context in which the section, of section held invalid may appear. So I believe what this is saying is just that, if it was found that one section or one line was not valid or not legal, that, that one part would just not apply, I believe. Again, I'm just glancing this over quickly.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't all state statute trump town charter?
Yeah. So it's almost like it wouldn't even necessarily need to be in there because of that?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, so I mean, again, I, I think that if, and again, I'm just, and I, and I understand it's kind of a little tangential from what we're talking about, but the, to me, if we're, if the charter is incorrect by conflict like that, we don't need to change anything in there, because we're going to defer to the, to the state anyway, but that would be something we would probably footnote or mark for the next revision. But I mean, if there's more things to take care of or address, because I've always understood it the same way, it's closed until it's open, and when it's open, it's open to everything, you can't open it for an element. But, you know, again, I, and there's a lot of things that are ambiguous part of this discussion, the things that we can't talk about, so if there's more to consider, we should bring it up at a future date.
Sure, and that, yeah, and that's why everything I included was simply public documents, obviously, you know, we all know there's things that we can't be discussing right now, apparently, from the border, so.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Counselor Carmody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I wanted to just repeat some of what Counselor Testa had said. I guess I am out of a loop and not fully familiar with, with the underlying issue here. My takeaway, and I wasn't on the council years ago when this change was made, but if I remember correctly, the council, and actually, I think Iris Pappali was on the council back then, my mentor, and I think, I remember her saying that it should be the professionals, the fire chief, the deputy fire chief, who make these decisions when, you know, you're looking at substantial credentials and, and important expertise for these positions. We were all laypeople, I don't think any of us up here is a volunteer, or certainly a career firefighter, but I, I just, I don't know where we're going here. I think that the, I think that it should remain in the hands of the chief and his counterparts at the fire department.
So, Chief, if I'm not mistaken, aren't you a qualified fire marshal?
That's correct, I'm a certified fire marshal.
Certified, and I think all of our fire chiefs have been fire marshals. The fire marshal is in charge of enforcing the entire fire code. And I, I think it makes sense that his supervisor, or her supervisor, is somebody who is also equally familiar with the entire fire code and all the other duties and obligations of a fire marshal. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, not to belabor this, but I did mention to Janice this week that I, I agree with her opinion, I, you know, ultimately. So, yeah, some shock. Anyway, but the wrinkle here is the historical on this, because, and, you know, we go back to my, the seven to one vote. What happened was, before the charter revision, it was decided that we could just give that power away, without changing the charter. And the fire marshal was selected by Chief Hydegard, without changing the charter. And I said, you can't do that without changing the charter. I said, we can do it anyway. So they appointed the fire marshal, then they did charter change, and codified what had already happened, ergo my seven to one vote. So if one is to say that you have to follow the charter, not with regard to this. So, just the historical on that is interesting, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Marone.
Real quick, although I think we've already belated this, but, so, so you're certified to be a fire marshal as well, is it a requirement to be a fire chief that you be certified as a fire marshal, or is that, are they separate and completely separate and distinct?
No, those are totally, totally separate certifications.
Left, right, I see no hands. I think you should run while you can. Item 11, review and discussion of group resignation of Parks and Recreation Commission. Counselor Marone, your item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and I know we invited the commissioners, so if they could come forward, that would be great. Good evening. So, so I was a little alarmed when, you know, we have volunteers, right? And so, it's hard enough to find volunteers to do, you know, to do jobs anyway, so when you have a group of volunteers leave all at once, it's sort of a cause for concern. So, then when I saw the resignation letter, the thing that really caught my eye was the, the discussion about safety, right? Because I mean, the parks have some, you know, there's some issues in some of the parks in terms of maintenance, and I'm not going to get into that certainly, but when you talk about safety items, it brings it to a sort of, sort of a whole new level. So I guess what I wanted to do is give the commissioners an opportunity to perhaps explain, you know, go into a little more detail about perhaps why they resigned, and if they could elaborate on some of the, what some of the safety concerns are, that would be really helpful as well.
Sure, sure. Well, the letter says the bulk of the reasons, and I'd like to state first that, I'm not here to destroy anybody or to point fingers, I'll try not to, but when it's warranted, it'll happen. But, you know, we went from a group of people, and we were the same core commission for a decade, that was entrusted to, we were, we were used as an unofficial arm of the department for a long time, and maybe that gave us a false idea of what we were there for. We, we, I mean, just for instance, we were handed the infancy egg of the community pool project. That's what we were handed, hey, the pool's reached the end of its life, let's, let's put together a plan to redo the community pool park. So we were handed that as a group, and we knocked it out of the park. We did our job for years and years. Mike was the chairman of that subcommittee. So we were given this idea, we were able to foster it, design it, reach out, go through the bidding process, design process, early design process, all of this was done in the And in recent years, we found ourselves unable to get a bush trimmed at Legacy Park. Maggie! For a dedication stone so we wouldn't be embarrassed when you couldn't see it. Matter of fact, two retired gentlemen, both commissioners, went and did the job. And this is a culmination, I mean, that's a broad 10 years, but, so we started out with this idea of what we were there for, and what we were able to do, and what we were asked to do. And that is at the director's discretion, now we've come to learn painfully, that if we're not, if we're not asked to do things, there's really nothing for us to do. And we're reminded on a regular basis that we are an advisory commission, which was fine, it was a tough pill to swallow originally, but, so we resigned into that spot and still tried to push for projects and push for, because in this whole process, from the commission to the mayor, we're the only volunteers here. All we want, we have no other agenda, all we want is to see the parks improve, and the facilities improve, and the programs improve, that's all we want, that's our, that was our job, we thought. So we're this advisory commission, and we've accepted that. And then it got to the point in recent, the past year, two, three months even, that we were seeing projects being done and didn't even know they were on the books. I drove by the gazebo being torn apart a month and a half ago and called Mike, I said, see the gazebo? He said, yeah. I said, you know anything about it? He goes, no. So if we're only there to advise, and now we're not being given the material even to advise on, that was it. That was the, you know, a cart can only carry so many toothpicks, and that was the last one that broke the axle, for me. And I speak now for me, and I mean, I know other people on the commission had their reasons, some of them overlapped, but I don't, I don't want you to think I'm, I'm speaking for everybody. But when it got to that point, that we were rendered down to this advisory commission, and then our advice isn't even being looked for, I mean, every, the director, the mayor, all of you, everyone has the option to take our advice and say, no, I don't think so. And that happened in the past, don't get me wrong with the prior director, there were times where we ran up against the wall and he was like, sorry, guys, no way. You know, that happened, we knew it. And, and, and simple requests, we couldn't get, it just became very frustrating, and it wasn't why we were there. We were very self-satisfied, over-satisfied for years, getting things accomplished and making improvements and having playscapes go in and, and making sure that our parks got safer and cleaner and improved. And we've, we've watched them spiral, unfortunately. They're a disaster across the board. And I'm ashamed to say it because I sat on this commission and watched it happen, but I challenge all of you, take a ride this weekend through all of them. I did it this morning to refresh my memory. I challenge every one of you to drive through with, with clear eyes as if you're moving here. Not that you've seen the same buildings and the same asphalt, the same nets and the same, you know, tennis courts, but drive here and take a look. I mean, there was a picture in the paper of the outbuilding at Doolittle that we, we had recommended years ago that we make it into a pavilion. It's got operating batteries, but it sits, and then there's graffiti on it, and there's no maintenance, nothing gets done, and now, not good. That whole lower section of Doolittle had a whole other set of playground equipment across the brook, in front of the brook, and it was always great for kids who had sensory disorders that couldn't be on the big playground. It's all gone. There's nothing over there anymore. Not a swing, not a slide, nothing. There's a set of basketball courts that have been there since I was a kid. But we, you couldn't watch that for so long and not be able to get traction to do anything. And you become frustrated, and I think all of us, we, we, we hit our own walls and, and made a concerted effort over a year ago to say, "Look, we're going to go one more year." The commission shuffled, the sitting chairman who had been there for a very long time said, "I just want to be a commissioner again." And so I, I was, I was elected into the seat, and I figured if I had my hands on the wheel, give it a year, can't change anything, and a year was June, June or July. And that's kind of how we ended up here. And that's the story of us doing that. And as far as the safety concerns, I'm not an auditor of playground equipment. I have been witness through the audits, I have the results of an audit from over a decade ago. Here, we found it in our, it's here, 2011. We, that was the only one that I was involved in directly. Went to the, you know, to the meeting afterwards, we were presented this by Lou Pence, who worked for this company, and there are pages after pages after pages of highly recommended repairs to me because they're out of compliance. And one of them that is consistent through town are these, they're fall zones. They're simple. You have a swing set, put one in your yard for your kids, you don't put it over hard pan, you're not putting it over something that'll give them a traumatic brain injury. You put mulch down, peystone, whatever you do. We don't do it here for a decade, a decade. I don't get it. I don't get where that has to be budgeted. It is budgeted. The current director had to budget it for three years to put mulch down. The equipment was purchased. It's a foot-high barrier, maybe, interlocks, it's plastic, and it holds all the mulch in place. It's been sitting at Public Works for over a year, while our kids swing on swings over rock-hard dirt. And I didn't want to be a part of it anymore. And that's the biggest one. There are bushings and metal, and there's all kinds of stuff that needs to be in. It's a big, I know it's a big machine. There are a lot of parks, there's a lot of equipment, but we have found that as things got pointed out, they got removed, replaced, on a plan for replacement, they're just plucked clean. All, every amenity at West Side Field over the years is gone. There was a tennis court, basketball court, there were playground equipment there. There's nothing. There's a hardball field, softball field, and this weird asphalt sport court. There's nothing there anymore. Most of Doolittle, the whole backside is gutted. Between, between those, those two parks and throw in Vets Memorial, there's four swings on those three pieces of land, and they sit on the playscape at Doolittle, which I assume is in compliance, I don't know, because I do the measurements and see if the mulch is still deep enough or whatever they put in there. But every other, if it's not a playscape that's recently been put in, it is out of compliance, way out of compliance, for way too many years. And you can only talk about it so much. I mean, I'm not one to go to screaming, I'm not a Facebook guy, I don't go and call the newspapers. This resignation letter went to your general mailbox, which I found out no one got. It went to the town clerk, and it went to the director, and within a day, it was on Facebook. And then within a day, every newspaper was called, so we didn't run out waving flags. We decided this is enough, you know, we had enough. And we wish luck to the next commission that comes in, but I believe under the system we have, I don't think they'll make any more way until people want it to happen. And the, that all can, you know, not getting, not getting to get the projects we want done done is one thing, but when it came to the safety stuff that just continuously got pushed away, then that was the end, you know, for me. And if us leaving and making this statement, hey, by next weekend, if we have mulch under swing sets, then I'm putting my head down and I'll look for another way to help town out. But it shouldn't have come to this. I mean, between the five commissioners that stepped down this year, you're probably, you're close to 50 years of Parks and Rec Commission experience, all gone for a new commission that'll have zero years. And maybe that's good, but we certainly didn't want to step down. We wanted to, to continue. It's gratifying, and it's a nice little niche. We don't, we don't have to go through what you guys do. I mean, if my dentist held evening hours, I would have heavily considered getting, you know, a Do Root canal, but alas, he doesn't, so my dance card was free. So I mean, you, you guys should get more things. We liked our little pocket because all we did was good. We didn't get a lot of hassle for trying to put better things in parks and improve things. So, I mean, that's, that's the gist of it. I, like I said, you're welcome to this, we don't have a need for it anymore. But I know with speaking with the prior director, there were multiple audits done since this one. I didn't see them, I didn't, it wasn't ever, it never came across our file, but I had spoke to him, and up until a few, a year or two or three years before he left, they had done them. So the info's there. That's about it. If you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All you have for now, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Zandry.
So I, I want to take the opportunity to thank the entire commission for all the years of dedicated service that you guys, you guys did, all the stuff that I was aware of and all the stuff that I'm, I wasn't aware of, because I, I don't even know the full scope of everything you guys have ever engaged on. I, I kind of want to outline what I would call a delicate balance of, of our parks and our town. I, I, as, I've talked to you before on the phone, so I mean, I grew up in this town, so when you said West Side Field, goes right back, I grew up two streets over. And I remember when those parks had buildings and counselors over the summer and carom games in that big white building across the back. So everything that I, everything that you've mentioned that's, that's disappeared from the parks, I, I feel you, I really do. And, and it's always been a struggle to get money for replacement, and, and I have seen over the years exactly what you're talking about. Items would get discussed, you know, we'd like to see, you know, teeter-totters changed because they're not that safe anymore, because that's what it used to be over at Wallace, and they would just disappear. And I would talk to, actually at the time, going back far enough, I can remember my parents talking to their friends, and they would say the same things to one another. "I don't want to call because I'm worried that it won't get fixed, but it'll get removed." So that's kind of our history. And a piece of that blame actually goes to the citizenry. I'm just going to put it out there. Because they don't campaign enough for the parks, and over time, it gets worse, because now the mindset is, eh, well, kids use the parks, well, kids even go outside, stick them on the curb with their phone, and they're good. I know that with Kendrick Park in my neighborhood, it took the neighbors getting together and raising some funds, not all, some of it was pitched in by, by the department. Sometimes this is the give and take, the push and pull, you guys are completely aware of that, I'm almost delivering this message, so that the people hear it. If they want some change, if they want to see some of these changes, we, we have to get more people involved. You can't count on a five or six-person commission to have the ear of the director and the ear of the mayor, and magic is going to happen. It takes a lot more, unfortunately. So, I mean, I maybe want to use this situation as a cautionary tale to everybody. You want to see bigger and better things for your neighborhoods, you don't want to have to do what, my neighbors kicked off that stuff at Kendrick Park, and I jumped on the bandwagon, little bit of fundraising, and they did a line to those, those mothers over there and those, it was almost all exclusively, well, the, the parents were all the mothers and a few of the, few of the guys, they did all of the architecting of what they were going to do, fundraising, and they said, you know, any help we can get. They did an awesome job, and they were a force to be reckoned with, and a part of it, that's what it takes now. So I hate to see more parks go by the wayside and not have the amenities, but the safety stuff, absolutely, we have to look into that. But I kind of, like I said, I, I kind of want to use it as a cautionary tale, that if, if people have this level of concern that there's not enough recreational things, that they really need to start getting in touch with us, call the mayor's office, call Kenny Michaels, call whoever it takes to open the discussion, because without it, it's not going to happen. So I really, really want to encourage that. If, if anybody's got ideas of how to do it, the way that your commission did it, or different ways that we can go and talk to Park and Rec and say, "Can we take some consideration on other, other items?" And we need to look into it. I mean, I'll, I'll use the example of the pickleball courts. That came in, that was a momentum-building thing that took place over some period of time, and when we got to the right spot, we were able to, to be able to push that into the budget and get it done. And, and even then, there was some finagling afterwards because a little bit of money was short, and I don't remember all the elements, but we were able to get it done. But that, that takes a, that's a long road to do, and that's why, again, it's almost a shame to have 50 years of experience take a walk. But I, I, again, maybe I want to wrap this up by saying, listen, I, I can't commend your group enough for all the things that you've done, and a lot of times, people, people gauge the success of something by, well, how much did they get accomplished? There are certain things that are not going to necessarily yield the result, but it doesn't mean that a ton of hard work wasn't put into it, and I, I want to take an opportunity to acknowledge that today, and for all of you. And at the same time, kind of just make that general comment to citizens, hey, if you want to see more in the parks, the, the department needs to know, you're going to have to talk to Park and Rec, you're going to have to get into contact with people. I know Doolittle, Doolittle is boiling, we're, we're going to end up having a discussion about Doolittle at some point. And it's not going to just be Park and Rec, it's going to be the police and this council, and it needs to happen. But I, I really want to engage the citizens right now and say, "Look, this, this goes back to, hey, this is your town. If you want something to happen in your neighborhood, the nearby park, then we need to get people involved and engaged and say, 'This is the change we'd like to see.'" All of these parks, especially the neighborhood ones, they go through a cycle. There are kids for a while, then there's older adult parents, and then grandparents, and then the grandparents start to swing because the kids come over, the grandchildren come over, and they go to the park that hasn't been touched 20 years, and the cycle restarts. So I, again, I really want to encourage the people to get involved, but I do, I do want to give you guys a, a, a well-deserved thank you for all the work and effort you've put in for over the years, and I can't say it enough. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, gentlemen. I know I spoke to Mr. Michael earlier today. I'm very sad to see you all go. I think you all did a job that I don't think I really appreciated or knew how much you did because you just did it under the radar and got stuff done, and now that, you know, we spoke and I realize how much you did do, I'm very sad to see you go. You know, Counselor Zandry, with all due respect, I'm not so sure that this is a citizen issue. I think there's, I think there are a lot of people that, that are concerned about our parks and that tell us that, and I, I think the issue here is that they, this commission felt they weren't able to address the issues. And I know sometimes, you know, we've had discussions up here about things too. Tyler Mill, I brought up a while, about a year ago, Doolittle is now an issue, the ARPA money that other towns have spent on parks, there's issues like this that I think we, we do have the opportunity to address and we're not. So if you don't mind, I did have a couple of questions while you're still, while you are still here. Was your commission ever asked about the ARPA money or ways you might like to spend it, or was that, was that anything you thought about or considered, or?
We were never communicated with anybody about where we could use the money. We did have some discussion, obviously, about the pool, thinking that that might have been an opportunity not to use all the money, but to throw some of the money at it, and I guess it all fell into fairs.
Yeah, and we had spoken about that this morning, and I think, I don't, I don't think your commission was aware that there was a vote up here to put our money towards the pool.
Yep. And I mean, in, in our meetings, it was batted around that, you know, you see this kind of money, and you see other towns, just, you know, this town's 2.1, and perhaps other towns got more and understood that, and some towns 500,000 or 50,000, 5,000. It's free money for things that we ask for that we get denied because there's no money. And, and that's kind of the, kind of the circular race we're always in. Hey, hey, we need this, we don't have money. Well, what about that money? No. So we, you know, it becomes probably the same with every department. But I sat in on the first couple of the Zoom meetings when the ARPA was just starting up, and, and, you know, we kind of threw our hat in the ring there a bit, but it was such a, it was a washing machine for a while, and I didn't, you know, continue to pursue it, because at that point, we were coming close to our, you know, our decision to kind of step down.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think you would have had some, you could have had some great ideas, so it's unfortunate that, you know, we didn't, we didn't discuss that with you. You know, and I could, I could take blame for that also, for not reaching out to you at that point, but I think, you know, it's not too late for the council. If we do want to, if we do want to do something, I think we can, we can still address some of, some of those ideas. The other, the other issue that's kind of been lingering, and like I said, I brought it up, gosh, it might have been about a year ago now, was Tyler Mill. And there's, there's been reports of issues with possibly the Conservation Commission, and, you know, maybe not, we're trying to prevent people from using it for recreation, well, the purpose of Tyler Mill was for recreation. And now it's kind of come up again with the recent altercation in Doolittle Park because apparently it was a cross-country team that maybe wasn't allowed to use Tyler Mill allegedly. I mean, I think we're still getting to the bottom of all this, but that's, that's what I'm hearing. Was your commission aware of, or is there anything you could provide us in regards to Tyler Mill and recreation, and what's, what's going on there the past few years?
Well, I mean, obviously, the current events, everybody is aware of, but for years, it was, it really wasn't on our plate for a long time, and we would always, you know, have to tamp down the, the arguments between the hiking people, trail stewards, and mountain bike people who wanted to be there, and, and I, I had always, I always had a hard time understanding that we have all this space and there's arguments about who can go where. I understand a marked trail and safety, but it's, it's 1,000 acres of open space, and if I want to take a left off of the blue trail and just march off into the woods, I think that should be allowed unless I'm stomping on some rare mushroom that I shouldn't be. But that was always my, I was in the minority there for a while, but we always, we would come to meetings once a year or so, this is years past, where, you know, you try to play the, you know, the mediator, and, and I believe in the past year or two, Director Michaels was, was named a trail chief, I don't know the name of it, but... But we always, we would come to meetings once a year or so, this is years past, where, you know, you try to play the, you know, the mediator. And I believe in the past year or two, Director Michaels was named a trail chief. I don't know the name of it, but so to be, to be a conduit between the groups because they've had a hard time getting along. And I don't know the answers to that. But we, because it was open space and not necessarily a labeled park, it didn't come across our file very often. Other than that, you know, that, I was a, when the microburst came through and was closed forever, that came up a few times. But other than that, it wasn't a, it wasn't a constant thing on our agendas.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I guess the only other thing I wanted to say, and I know I told you this earlier today, but when I, for a couple of years, I lived in a neighboring town. And I would come to Wallingford to use Parks and Rec, like the fitness classes. And I would pay that, you know, the non-residential fee, it was like $5 or $10, to come here for that. And I drove about 20 minutes to come to the, because the park, our park rec has such great offerings. The instructors are all wonderful. The facility is wonderful. I mean, everything is just really top-notch. And I really feel like our Park and Rec Department is something we should really be proud of. It's a great department. But like you said, I think, I think there's things in the parks that we really should work on. And, um...
I agree completely. I think, I think Director Michaels is a fantastic programmer and, and he, those, my children were in, they were in preschool there. They've gone through all the programs, the basketball, all of it, the camps. And, uh, and we would brag to our friends who didn't live in Wallingford. You've got to come here. It's fantastic. It's affordable. It's wonderful. Our, our meat and potatoes in our parks are the bigger, I think is the bigger issue that kind of gets, it just gets ignored. And I don't know if there's reasons behind it or, and to dovetail and to Counselors Andrews, if people speak up about it. Although I do believe that the town is responsible for, for the parks. I don't think the citizens here should have to ask for their parks to be top-notch. We just don't. I think that's a responsibility of this town. For what, if, you know, I, it's not a popular statement to make, but I don't mind paying my taxes. Give me nice things or maintain the things we have. And I think a lot of people feel the same way. But yeah, I have to agree wholeheartedly. I think the actual Parks and Rec Department and their programming is second to none.
Great. Well, thank you, thank you both so much. And I think, you know, it's obvious tonight too, for anyone who hasn't spoken to you, but obviously, obviously through your work, that, you know, we're losing really top-notch individuals here. And I know, you know, we haven't always agreed on the pool, for example. You know, early on, we had some discussions about the pool. But I can say that every discussion was professional and, you know, you're really, you're wonderful people and very knowledgeable and professional. And it's a big loss for us. So, thank you for everything.
Counselor Fishby.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, gentlemen. First of all, thank you for coming tonight. It could have been very easy to say, what's done is done. You know, we're not going to. So I appreciate very much you coming tonight. I appreciate everything you've done. I see Mr. Gilo's back there. He's also been a stalwart part of the commission, and I appreciate everything that he's done. You know, it shouldn't be this way. We're talking about what's supposed to be fun stuff. You know, playing in parks and swinging on swings and jungle gyms and that kind of stuff. And this is not how it should be. You know, recently, I was walking through Middlefield. We've got a great park in the center of town, Peckham. It was an open skate park area, very well maintained. There's a pavilion area. There was a couple of families that were having a gathering there. And I walked to the park and I said, you know, this little town, a very small population, not a big budget, this is a beautiful, beautiful park. It looks nicer than any park we have in Wallingford. It was disappointing because it went through the budget last time. You know, I wasn't here for the night that you guys came before, well, Park and Rec in general came before this body. But I was going to ask, give me one park that you're proud of. Because I can't name one. Go and play softball, yes, there are places to play softball. But I certainly remember what Doolittle Park used to be like. I remember West Side Field playing street hockey there. My father started a street hockey league on that playing surface that I don't think has really been updated in many, many years. I don't know where we go from here. I do recognize that you submitted resignations. I respectfully decline accepting those. I don't know what you do with that because I don't want to lose you all. The audit, when is the last time an audit was done to your knowledge?
I couldn't, I couldn't tell you. Like I said, I spoke with the former director and he had said that they did them for years after, the 11 one that I have. But he said they weren't done in his last couple of years here. I don't know if he and the risk manager just finally said, you know, it's the same thing over and over. He had said, we threw our hands up. And so I don't know. I'm sure if this one's here, they're somewhere.
Do you have any idea how much the audits cost?
I don't know if it was paid for through the, through the budget or if it was, if it was, I don't know if it cost anything. I know this company probably didn't do this for free.
Sure.
It's a guess on my part.
Well, I mean, I guess, you know, we have a limited amount of control, but I certainly would be in favor of an audit. You know, we can certainly try and find some money to do an audit and it becomes a punch list because certainly safety concerns. And I too, you know, I read from the email, requests ranging from simple signage to major safety issues are constantly going by the wayside at one level or another. That is embarrassing and inappropriate for anybody to have to suffer. I mean, there's having nice shiny objects and there's having objects that aren't going to hurt you. And I think we have a responsibility. And there's another paragraph where it says, projects have not moved an inch. Safety issues continue to be ignored. And all the while, other stuff is happening. So that leads me to believe that there's an impression that there is a lack of prioritization of safety issues. Once again, very distressing. If you had the magic wand, what would you have happen?
By magic wand, you mean the money? It's hard to say where to start. Every single park. I mean, so years ago, we would, we would do a kind of an internal parks report, which we were preparing over the summer. And, you know, each commissioner would take two or three, four parks. You go in and we would list our wants, our needs and our pie in the sky ideas. And we would kind of render those down and deliver it to the director and say, you know, this is, this is what's, this park, this is the shape it's in. And it helps to walk, we'd walk through it and it would take weeks. And we had compiled the rough outline of the one we were doing this year. And we were going to finish it, present it to you. And I think that was going to be the end of our road. But I didn't think it was fair to, you know, light the fuse and walk away. The bare bones of it are together in rough format with photos. And I mean, right down to, I couldn't say silly stuff. I mean, I'll bring up West Side Field again. There's a scoreboard there when the Vikings played football. It's a disaster, but it's sitting there and somebody owns it. I don't know if it's us. I don't know if it's the Vikings, us being the town. Why is it there? Why is it still there? There's a storage container there next to a building. All of it just adds. So those are the things we would write down. And you can imagine, if you ask me that question, it's really hard to answer. For me, it started Park A, go to Park Z. You know, what's needed, what's, what's absolutely needed, what's wanted and what's dreamed of. And that's how we would handle it. And we would just go from, from property to property and right down to, I mean, Mike argued for years about, can we get a small playscape at Vets Park? So the kids aren't playing in the swales while their brothers and sisters are playing soccer or baseball. There's nothing there. Nothing there. And families are parked there for hours for soccer and baseball. We wanted a simple playscape near the pavilion that sits in the middle of all of that. And we just couldn't get it. So it's a long answer, but you can imagine. I think every park is in need of everything.
But sort of like a long-lost relative leaves you a bunch of rental properties that haven't been made name, right?
Right. Which is hard like you said.
Yeah. Where do you start? You know, you've got to start somewhere, right? You know, and I have to, you know, I'm harkening back to the animal shelter where I find out about this stuff afterwards. So I got to ask, you know, my office right across the street, I talk to people every day. Why wasn't there some sort of reach out? This is a breaking point. We're going to be going away. I never heard from anyone.
So that, that doesn't really sit on us. We deliver our information to the director of Parks and Rec. And we would do that for years through John, and some things would filter through and most things wouldn't and other things, it's at their discretion. And that is my, my statement in that resignation letter about systemic change. I think the system we have is too easily muted. Clearly, it's the same system we had for a long time. And it really depends on a few people whether things are going to move or be, or be muted. I didn't feel it was our need to go call all of you guys and be like, hey, 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 hey. You know, we had our meetings, we had our meetings with the mayor, we had our, you know, we have a monthly meeting with the director. And it's all advisory. We give our advice and that's where we're told to stop. Told to stop. So why we need to go with you? Well, we did our job and above and beyond media, a casual conversation running to someone that, you know, at least in Wallingford, you know, they ask how it's going, offer it up. But for us, our job was to get the information, well, for a long time, was to get the information into the meetings, into the director's hands and then the boss.
So you're saying that the rules, well, I mean, the charter is the creation?
Well, I don't want to sound like it's us looking for some sort of power that we don't have to have. But there's, our ceiling is short. It's here. When we go to our director, we tell, you know, that's where we discuss our things. We have gone and spoken with the mayor about things in the past and different things and some rectified, some were massage, some were denied. That's how it works. We get that. Or we were redirected to aim our efforts in another area that got a project moving forward in a way that would be more efficient, like a clearing of, a clearing of community land. You know, four years ago, because it took three years to get done. Four years ago, we're standing there, you wouldn't know there was body and water because these trees have grown since the dam broke and they dredged it and trees and vines and trees. You couldn't tell there was water. And, you know, we're sitting there, hey, you know, why don't we clear this? We have amenity. So the idea comes out and we just wanted to do it. And then, you know, we're bringing to the powers that be and then we get directed. And then the powers that be are into their, their chief. And then so we got to go through, you know, we had people from the state come in and the town, Aaron, Aaron came in. So it bottomed down for a while and then it ended up to bid, but it finally got done. We had mine. We always call ourselves primers. We know that's what it takes.
But I want to know why I'm kept in the dark. So maybe one of the changes that would help here is that reporting by the commission comes to the council on a monthly basis. That would probably solve part of your problem.
Well, certainly it would be more efficient than, you know, a seven or eight bullet point set of minutes. Because the minutes, I mean, the minutes are there.
The minutes though...
But they don't convey.
Anywhere, yeah.
I agree.
Anywhere near the frustration that the email depicted is, believe me, I would have been there. So I'm disappointed that I learned about this stuff after you guys already decided to go. And that's why I don't want to see you go.
So there you go. Maybe that's the first step. That's not a huge crack of the charter change. I don't know how easy that is implemented. And then the next commission sits here and delivers with your director, you know, what the frustrations of our accomplishments are. I don't know, whatever. You guys would want to have that, obviously, on your plane.
All I can say is that all three of you, at some point, I'm sure will be appointed to some commission. And please call me if this problem leaves. So that's all I got. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Carmody.
Evening. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here with us this evening. Thank you for all your service to our community. Counselor Fishby touched upon this and you had mentioned a safety study done in 2011 by a professional, a manager. Is that correct? How was the safety insurance? I was just curious, I, it looks like a quick reminder there. I was just curious if you could point out some highlights that were within that, that report?
Well, I'd be happy to just hand it over. You guys can make copies. I don't need it back. And if Dave doesn't give it back, because he's the one who gave it to me, then have that.
Yeah, I guess my question, my question really was, you know, were there issues in there that were not rectified in the past 11 years?
Well, unless my memory serves me wrong, then yeah, absolutely. Specifically, the fall zone.
Fall zone.
Yeah. Underneath the swings, slides, anything that...
So you're saying, so you're saying that a report done 11 years ago about the safety of our playscapes and our parks recommending improvements for children using the playscapes, it was completely ignored?
Well, I don't know if it was completely ignored. There's plenty of things in there from bushing wear to a cracked swing seat. I mean, I couldn't tell you. We, it was never reported back to us that, hey, Public Works got out there and replaced that. So they, and I'm sure they did. I mean, there were broken chains. There were, you know, swings that were frayed. And so it was, it's pretty terrible.
Yeah, we have a few parks that are, Hendrick is one that we did and that has the fall zones. Grand Street, which we did a couple of years ago, was a sample of the fall zone. I think Doolittle playscape was also taken care of. So we don't want to say that not as much.
Well, refresh my memory. How many, how many parks do you oversee or did you oversee as a, as a, as a member of the commission?
I think there's 27. I mean, but that's included, I mean, yeah, all of ours.
I mean, the, the gazebo, the reason I brought that up because it's a park. Even when the whole tree replacement took place, I remember driving by, I'm like, wow, trees are rotten. But I didn't even realize at that point that it was a park until I spoke to John about it. And he said, well, that's a tree park, that's park.
And another issue regarding the park over there was that the Public Works Department decided to take out benches and do things and move them all around. We used that bench where they would face, you could sit here and you could here and you could be over there. Well, they took one of the benches out and just faced them into the park. So they were just a bench, not two benches to talk. And no one confided in any of us, including, I think at the time, I don't think it was Kenny, I think it was John Ballack. We went, certainly, I think that they would do that, obviously, to talk to them. So some communication issues there.
And gentlemen, just back to the report, that's the only report that you're familiar with?
It's the only one that we were looped into during Director Ballack's tenure. We have had another one since that we were part of. This one we were part of because I don't know if it was, because was the first one we were part of? I don't, I can't see it for Dave. I can't see them before or not. But we were part of this intimately because that's when we started doing these parks reports, the internals. And that's why I reached out to the former director and asked, did you do any following 2011? Yes, or that's anything. So I don't know, I don't know where they are.
Yeah, I'm sure. I guess my question then is for our Parks and Rec director or for the mayor. I mean, do we require, I mean, are we required by our insurance company or our risk manager to do a regular inspection of our parks?
Now, let the director speak to this. The risk managers involved, insurance company advises, is regular routine.
Kenny Michaels, Director of Parks and Recreation. So Kirk Driver, risk manager, myself, we go out annually. So we actually do every fall, so we go in in two weeks.
So there's written reports?
So and we jot notes. We don't do annual reports. I've never done one as a director. So we just do a punch list of notes.
Are those meant to say?
Yeah, I think on, like in a file folder. And we just do punch notes of what needs to be repaired, if it's a priority or it's not a priority. You know, what can we wait to get to? What needs to be fixed now? Things, you know, cracks on a little coupling on a playscape can wait. If it's structural damage, it's something I'm going to have to address right away. if it's structural damage, it's something I'm gonna have to address right away. So again, you know, in two weeks, when we go out, we just do no page to park. Doolittle, what do we need? You know, I already know I went and saw it the other day, there's, there's a little chip or a trunk missing on the slide, so we're gonna have to replace the slide at Doolittle, or-
So our insurance company, our risk manager does not require annual, annual reports?
I don't know if the insurance company does, that I can't speak to.
Um, that's all I have for you. I, it just, from, from what I'm hearing tonight, um, you know, it, our facilities in town are, are falling apart, our parks, our gazebo, um, they're all falling apart, and, and the infrastructure of our community is crumbling. Um, you know, and why is this happening? You know, it was, what are we gonna do to rectify this situation? Our town is in disrepair, and frankly, Mr. Mayor, you are accountable, the ball stops with you, and I don't see you taking any proactive measures in, into maintaining, even maintaining the steps, well, let alone, um, making proactive measures to improve.
I disagree with you, there's a lot of work being done on a regular basis, I don't think things are falling apart, people enjoy the parks, we have no complaints from the average member of the public, our recreation programming is back to pre-COVID levels. Um, yeah, isn't perfect. No, it's not perfect, but there are things that were, were, are completed, suspension of the pickleball courts, tennis courts, uh, over West Side, there's complete renovation of the fields over there for the football stadium.
I, I can just speak on some of the renovations that have, that have just, you know, the last three years of my tenure, um, that we renovated, the tennis courts at Doolittle Park converged to close-sanctioned concrete tennis courts. We had the pickleball, uh, conversion over at Harrison Park. Public Works placed three roofs on, uh, the restrooms on West Side, softball, they did the restrooms on the Loveberry Pavilion, um, there was another one, I can't remember what other park they did. Oh, they did the roof on the Pavilion at Community Lake. All that arrived, considering, um, the canyon, all the facilities that people use on, on a day-to-day basis that are heavily used, that had to be repaired. We did just close to $13,000 in fence repair at Keller Field, which is Park Farms, uh, Yelena Lindley complex, um, all because of safety issues. Curling fences, uh, posts that were detached, all things that had to get done. So-
Grand, Grand Street.
Grand Street Park was updated and redone, um, so there, there are things getting done. In, in a, in a perfect world, if we're gonna go back to the Magic Wand, I'd love to have a Magic Wand, I'd love to have an antichannel.
Sure, and I, I agree with that, and I understand that, but I, I think overall, we have deferred maintenance in this community for way too long, and, and frankly, the town hall is the perfect example. We had an OSHA complaint by one of our employees just a couple of weeks ago. Something needs to be done, and it's not being done, and so, Mr. Mayor, I disagree with you that the town is, uh, is in misrepair.
Councilor Murrell.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So maintenance of parks is a basic government function, I mean, I mean, it does get, like, you know, the, the police, there's fire, that you're gonna have parks to the public, and it's sort of one of the most basic functions of, of local government. And I'm not trying to put this necessarily on the Rec Department, because obviously the maintenance of the parks is a sort of coordinated effort, right, between, you know, the Rec Department, between Public Works, the Police Department, you know, so on and so forth. We have a lot of, you know, the crime problem at Doolittle is as much of an offshoot of some of the other issues that we're seeing in town as, as sort of the, the maintenance issues, right? So I don't think you can, you know, you can sort of parse it out and say, so, and I, I agree with Michael a lot, I, I do see a lot of maintenance around town of different items, but I think that there's still sort of major, you know, issues with the parks. I agree with everything that Mr. Carmody said with regard to the, the sort of deferred maintenance, there was a lot with the, so the police station was a situation now where we have like an emergency replacement of the police station, right? Because it's, it's been so long, and animal control was sort of kind of the same thing where we're having major issues. So we've been spending all this money on open spaces, and I'm, I'm done spending money on open spaces until we can address some of the, the issues with the things that we already have. You know, we, we're spending my hand over fist to buy new space, it knew probably the ones to maintain, I think we need to take some of that focus and put it back in some of the stuff that we have already. Um, you know, until Councilor, Councilman Tatab mentioned something, the ceiling of this room was, uh, was falling apart, uh, you know, and then again, fortunately, that got repaired prior to the, uh, the play taking place in here. But, you know, maintaining parks is sort of a basic, basic government function, I just think it, it needs a lot more attention. I also wanted to say thank you to you guys for coming forward tonight, so I hadn't, I hadn't said that earlier, um, in my introductory comments. So I really do appreciate you, appreciate you coming down to talk about this, because a lot of people, you know, would, would just walk away and let it go. So, um, I'm not sure what the next step is, I, I would be interested in a copy of that report, if nothing else, just give me a baseline of what we're, what we're talking about. Um, Mr. Chairman, maybe, uh, you could, the town clerk, he should get sent us, uh, if anyone's trying to copy?
Should be done with the clerk, please.
But, um, so thank you for bringing this forward, hopefully this is a good, beginning of a good conversation about how we're gonna maintain, you know, our public spaces. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilor Xander.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I wanted to follow up on one of my prior comments and add, add a couple more questions. When I was talking a little bit earlier and saying, you know, the citizens really have to get involved, because, you know, without their engagement, you know, you know, we're not gonna know what to do with, but Councilor Chubb was the original one who brought this up, and she's right, it really is our responsibility, and I'm not, I'm not looking to shirk what our responsibility is, everybody, but let me give you an example. When, and I'm not, I'm not picking on, on the department, but when any department comes forward and says, you know, we had our discussion with the mayor, budget time, the discussion goes back and forth over there, and then the, the budget gets brought forward for us to question, a lot of times what we ask up here is, for all the different programs you wanna do, or the things you need, are, are you all set to be in? Or we, we can't just sit there and go, well, we'd like $50,000 more for X, because we don't know what people need, and I would go back to pickleball court, because the budget was set, and it didn't include money for the pickleball, or, or it tried, it got pushed in, pushed out, the discussions, and it wasn't going to happen, and we moved money around because we, we were aware, we knew that it was something that somebody wanted. So as that budget was finishing up its effort, we put the money in, and then, then there was even additional money that was needed, that the mayor moved over on that effort at the time. So without knowing what people want, now, I'm not just talking about like the safety and upgrades, yes, that is definitely something that has to be included in part of the budget, but if we don't have at least some direction for what people are looking for, we can't just act, we can't just say, the director, Michael, you're up, sorry, I'm gonna pick back here, you're up, we're, we're gonna vote, maybe give you $50,000 more, figure out what you're gonna do with it, it doesn't work like that. But if, if the director, him or anybody else came forward and said, we've kind of had our budget, but we haven't caught this element, we really would have liked it gotten that done this season, well, how much is that? Well, it's X. We can discuss that up here, but if you don't know, we're not gonna get it done, and that's really where I am springing on that idea that, hey, the people should come forward and say, can we take a look at this park, can we take a look at this equipment and change it? It shouldn't be all on them, but there, there's gotta be a level of engagement. If, if we take any park, we'll call it Park A, and, and, and the director decided that other than just maintenance things and repairs that had to be done there, he was gonna install four pieces of brand new equipment there, based on his own assessment independently, and then no one used that park because the, because the, the neighborhood had shifted, the demographic of the neighborhood had shifted, that would be unfortunate, because we had this park with four pieces of equipment that almost nobody would use. This is why, that's an example of where the squeaky wheel is, is going to get degrees. So that's why I'm asking people to get engaged, and, and because it's been brought up as part of the park's use, and, and the different things that we do up here, I, I'm gonna ask about Tyler Mill, because we do, a lot of, a lot of what we do up here, and one of the largest elements is land purchasing, you know, property doesn't get water sold in this town without the, without the approval of the town council, and there's, a lot of times we discuss the open space purchases that get done, and, and it's always a discussion up here, every single time. How are the people gonna be able to get access? Will they be able to do this? Will they be able to do that? Can they walk? Can they ride a bicycle? And we understand that before we vote yes or no. So it bothers me a little bit when, when I, I, I heard about the incident over Doolittle Park, and that does still need to get brought up, but the coach indicated they had been practicing at Tyler Mill, and were told they couldn't meet there any longer. So I'd like to know where that directive came from, if it came from anywhere.
That's false, and I'm kind of a little upset that neither of you called me and discussed, you know, that, that, before that statement was made. Um, it was actually my idea for Mr. Parent and his team to go to West Side Field, not West, uh, Vietnam Vets, because they were looking for a place during the pandemic to start to have their practices for Holy Trinity. I suggested Vietnam Vets Field One, because then they had access to the trails, but part of the stipulation was to keep them on the, the sanctioned trail system, because if he takes them off on some of these road paths and they get hurt, then who's liable at that point? They were never declined or told that they could not go there, so that's false.
Well, I, I appreciate that, because I, I would have eventually gotten around to giving your department a call, because I, I was given that information when the Record Journal called me, and I had no other context for it other than the fact that that was the quote that was given to me by the reporter. And that's why, that's why, that's why I said what I said, why track and field people can't use Tyler Mills beyond make? And that, and I meant that at the time, because if that was something they were told, and that was what I was being communicated, that's wrong, and so I'm glad you've come and basically identified, they can use it.
Absolutely, I mean, hold, I mean with the athletic director for Holy Trinity, because they use our fields for soccer, baseball, softball, track and field will be no different. Oddly enough, the incident at Doolittle, I had to reach out to the athletic director because I wanted to know, because we didn't have a permit for them to be there, was that a, a practice facility or a, a practice location for them? Because we didn't have a permit for them to be holding practice at Doolittle, which they did not have, I guess it was a one-time thing where they just stopped there, they were there, and the incident happened, and whatever, the place had-
Now, did, did they need a, a permit because it was an organized thing? Is that why there's a-
It's an organized activity at the park, so god forbid if something happened, let's say a kid rolled an ankle, or, or something happened like this incident, well, did you know that the track and field team or the cross-country team was holding practice at Doolittle? My personal confidence, no, I had no idea. Looked in our system, nobody was there, the only thing we had was our old softball league, you know, we had, uh, something else was scheduled down there, but they weren't on the schedule. So just when things come up like that, it just makes us aware of who's there. So for instance, arise, and hey, the police are down at Doolittle, they're dealing with a group of kids, we can look in our schedule and see who's there.
That's, that's good to know, too. So I, 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 I guess my other question with that would be, I mean, if, if a group of people is just meeting together, I don't know, it could be a walking club, is there some reason that they can't just go to Tyler Mill and use it, or do they, does everybody that, that congregates large need a permit?
If it's a large group, it all depends on who they are, so if it's a large walking group, or an organization, or let's just say it's, it's a, a 50-person walk for cancer, and they wanna use Tyler Mill, well, they gotta have a certificate of insurance, because if they're a group and, and they're large enough, who's, who's coverage, who's covered? Like all our other groups that use the parks, they, they permit it out, schedule them out, these groups that do attend, they have to have a certificate of insurance, just to make sure that everything's, you know, up to date.
But if it's not an organized group, a group of people show up, they just wanna walk together, anyone can do that. Where, where the problems have come in is when people go out there and change the landscape, because they want the landscape to be different for their purposes. At that point, they're told, no, you can't do that.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate that, so that definition helps a little bit for myself, too, because I mean, it would be an example of, you use like an organized activity like a walk for something, but if, you know, I walk up, down, up and down the same street almost every single day, if I got a bunch of my neighbors, they're gonna say, let's just go up to Tyler Mill and park cars and walk around, that's okay independently.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, that, that's, that's great, that's good to know, because that gave me a lot of concern, because, again, we, we spend a lot of time up here talking about, hey, we're gonna buy this adjacent, and I'm not using Tyler Mills as an example, that, that's almost a no-brainer, other parks in town where we're, you know, we're borderline to some open space and another five acres comes up, when we make the decision to purchase that, and we figure that, have 45,000 people, maybe five of them will actually walk on it, but we wanna be able to say to them, yeah, you can't bring this, you can't do that, no, no food, no this, you wanna walk around in the garage, you can do that, your access road is here, you park here, and we wanna be able to tell them that. So I, I appreciate that, that you clarified that for me.
No problem.
I, I, I really do, thank you very much. Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Fishman.
Mr. Michael, I just, um, I thank you for coming here today, um, listening to this, you know, I, I'm not pointing any fingers, I just, I think something needs to be done. So we're gonna have a meeting in another two weeks, I guess, on the 26th. How long would it take you to come up with a list of two categories of items, addressing safety concerns and improvements?
Make sure the audio for two-
Would it come within, you know, the parks?
I think, I think two weeks could be sufficient.
Okay, if you could do your best to get that to, um, the council chairman, so perhaps we can make that part of our next agenda, um, for our meeting.
Sure.
It might not fall that way, you know, I'd rather have quality as far as, you know, I don't want you to rush.
Yeah, no, I could definitely be in contact with you, like, you know, you know, if we can make it for the 26th, or if we need some more time.
Sure, and if you could have some sort of estimated, you know, round-figure budget for the items, that would be helpful, too.
Yeah, I mean, to, to go on to Jason's point about the, you know, the, we talked about the playground safety surfacing, I mean, I had three triads, three triads delivered. Um, we've had playground order for, it's almost 18 months now, and we're waiting to be installed at Wallace Park. I mean, a lot of it is, we don't have our own maintenance crew, you know, my hands are tied when it comes to that, because I rely on the Public Works Department. Rob's busy, and they have a lot of things that they have to deal with within town, and then it's trying to coordinate our maintenance and some things that we need done within their work, within their department, what they need to get done, and other town departments, and other town buildings, so it's, it's a tough juggling act, and, you know, once I submit my request and send my request, it's, I'm at mercy if they're scheduling.
Well, perhaps that's another category, where you have the materials, which you're waiting on, um, you know, Public Works to get some manpower, because then I can call Rob and, you know, and see what's going on over there.
Right, because I think Jason may have touched on it a little bit, I mean, I, when, when I became director, I had a three- to five-year plan to upgrade all the playground safety surfacing. And, you know, it started with Grand Street, and we completed the project there, we were moving on to Wallace Park, and then we kind of hit a, a roadblock there because, you know, scheduling the work started becoming busy for Public Works, and we couldn't get this, this one completed. So Wallace is, the, the equipment and everything's there to do Wallace, and then it's just to move on to the next one from there. I don't want to move on if I'm still a stalemate at this one.
Agreed, and perhaps pieces of that can be done in the interim, so let's, wanna have that all before us, so we can have it in special. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, gentlemen, um, thank you for everything, and understatement, I mean, I say I'm disappointed in what's happened here, um, but I will tell you this, if I have my way, you'll be back, because I'm gonna put that pool in, and I need your expertise, so, I'll take a rest, I'm gonna get you back. Um, I'll just make a brief comment here, it, it, there's a lot we could talk about. It did seem to me that, I sensed in what I've read and heard and seen and so forth, that, you know, there, there, I'm not, I'm not here to, to call into one else, but perhaps there, there may have been, uh, there may, may have been some tension between your commission and maybe the department that you report through, and everything reports to the mayor, and everybody's working hard, everyone's doing the best they can. I'm not saying it's anyone's fault involved if there was, but I will, I will say this, there is some fault, and that's, that's at the top. Um, there, there, to me, this is a failure of, of executive oversight. In any business, in any activity, in an organization, if there's conflict, if there's strife, if there's something going wrong, and, um, at any level, um, sooner or later, the person at the top has to step in, get everybody together and straighten it out. However, that is gonna be done, and it has to be done. There's, there's been a failure of establishing priorities at the top. There's, there's been a failure of establishing priorities at the top. Mr. Michaels can only do so much of what he's given. Public Works can only do so much with what they're given. There has to be more direction and oversight and the establishment of priorities, so that you, and you, and everyone else can get done the things that need to be done. Councilor Carmody put it well when he talked about the state of our infrastructure. This is just, this situation here, to me, is indicative of a lack of oversight and management, proper management. And I think that does need to change, however it does change. But I want to thank you for all you've done, and I was not joking. You're not going to get away, because we are going to renovate Community Pool. And when we do, we're gonna need your expertise. So stay by the phone. Thank you.
I see no other hands on the council, or are there any questions to the council? Public.
Let's see, I'm just running something dry. I want to thank you, too, but I want to thank you for something different. I want to thank you for resigning. That's what I want to thank you for. I've sat in these meetings for decades. Not five years, 10 years, 12 years, decades. And I watched one commission after another, not resign, fade into the sunset. I watched Tommy Wong work like a dog to get a skating rink here. It just faded away. It was never denied, it was do another study, let's look at it again, and so on and so forth, till you know who went away? Not the idea, but the people, the citizens that you spoke of, who do all of this pushing, who finally said, you know what? I can't do this anymore. Tom Sopolo with the golf course. But the one that I really, really want to mention is Community Lake. A group of men, and maybe women, I don't know, fought for Community Lake from the time the dam burst. All of them, except Tom Saversky, who's in very poor health, died. No, I think John Walworth is on that commission, as we all know. He's still here. However, just before he left, one of John, and for years, we tried to get that pool. They worked with the state, John Walworth worked with it. He told me countless stories of why this didn't happen and that didn't happen. When the dam first broke, there were no regulations from DCP. It could have just been put back. It didn't get put back. And it didn't get put back, didn't even try for years. Well, yes, they tried, all right? That commission's never been restored. Just before, one of the last things John Thompson did as engineer, as a town engineer, he did a study. And he had worked with the state to create two bodies of land there. One a four-acre parcel, not very big, but big enough for kids to have paddle boats or whatever, and the other one was an 11-acre parcel, about the size of our cemetery. I went upstairs in the engineering department, and I read that report fist-back. It has every town that has, has restored this kind of lake. It has, I didn't even read the pages that have the lengths and the figures and the depths and the percentages. I went through that entire report, which was ready to be presented to the state. And in the end, the final summation was, needs more study. Needs more study. And to my knowledge, just was before COVID, that I went up there and read it. It's still sitting up there, and the whole idea, as far as I know, of restoring Community Lake is dead. It is dead. So this is a pattern in this town. People talk about it. Citizens, that you're referring to, get great ideas. They volunteer to serve on committees. They serve for years, not just two or three years, but 10 years, 20 years. Sam Savy was on that committee since the dam broke. Okay? Since the dam broke in 1979. And nothing ever got done, okay? So the greatest thing, or one of the greatest things you gentlemen have done, is to bring this to light, the failure of this community. And there's a lot of people to blame, because there's very few people that I've noticed in this town who have the courage to come up and speak publicly about the things that are wrong, especially if they're on a commission, or on a committee, or in government, because no one wants to rub anyone the wrong way. Everyone's concerned about his or her standing. It takes a great deal of courage to say, I'm quitting, and this is why I'm quitting. I'm not going to deal with this anymore. If you don't care about the town, then, you know what? Two, three years ago, I called about the gazebo, it was falling apart. I bugged Rob until he didn't want to even take my calls anymore. Then he told me he was gonna do it a couple of years ago. Then he told me, he said, you know what? We're gonna incorporate it into the railroad station renovation. I said, Rob, somebody's gonna fall right through that. He called me just before he started the renovations and said, let's see, I'm going to, we're gonna start the reservations, the renovations on the gazebo, you're gonna see, it's gonna be piecemeal, but it is gonna be done, because it's dangerous. I shouldn't have to, as a citizen, be bugging a town employee for three years of something that's dangerous. What are you guys doing up there? Where is the passion? Where is the anger? I get angry, because I'm passionate about Wallingford. I see people talking great games, but I don't see anybody stamping their foot and saying, this has got to stop. I'm hearing all this conversation tonight, I'm gonna see where it's gonna go. I'm gonna see which one of you is gonna take the bull by the horns and really say, this has got to be done. I'm tired of a totalitarian regime, where one person has control over every single thing that happens in this town, no matter what anybody else does. And I'm waiting for that leader, that Wilensky, to stand up and say, or, yes, did I say it right? To stand up and say, this is not going to stand any longer. So I commend you, I commend Dave, I commend all of you for standing up and saying, we're sick of it, and we're not gonna take it anymore, and these are the reasons why. Thank you.
A lot of things on the road, Chief. Mrs. Trzynski, we got one thing, too. The schools, they, some of them should have been replaced. They weren't at all.
Yes.
It all starts with the mayor. And we all know, Community Pool, they were a lot of money. They didn't get done before the pandemic, now during the pandemic, after the pandemic, whatever. Nothing gets done, because the mayor in town here, because he controls the ability to do it. So two things. Well, first, Public Works, they are understaffed. I said that during the budget hearing. They need more people. And this is, that's, you can see what it's affecting with the park and rec, and thank them for their service for all these years. I know it's, I can't imagine they're doing these things and bending their head against the law, because they have great ideas and it would make the town nice. Because, as they said, parks are a mess, and we've said this, sidewalks are a mess, roads are a mess. I mean, nothing in town is getting done. So with budget time, hopefully it will approve more park and rec, uh, park and rec, uh, Public Works. But if you approve it, he has to approve the dollar spent. So at some point, as Mrs. Trzynski said, that hopefully, the only way to take all the power away from the mayor is you need charter revision. You are nine elected officials, and I said this earlier tonight, you have no power. You guys, I mean, I agree with Sam there, and everything, Mr. Carmody, that everything, you know, goes back to the mayor on this, this repair, because he's the leader. You guys would do things if you had the ability to do things. But everything goes back to him, Mr. Mayor. And I would just hope that at some point, charter revision will be revisited. You won't look at the person in that seat, but at some point, you know, this, Mr. Mayor won't be there forever, but somebody else could be there. It could be even more totalitarian than he is in controlling things. You need, you're nine elected officials. I would hope that you guys were, you're the ones who can, I think I'm correct, you're the ones who can open a charter revision. You appoint the charter revision commission. You approve what the charter revision comes back with ideas, and then you put it up to a vote in the public. And if you're behind those ideas, all sides of the aisle, things can pass, and things can change. Because this is a wonderful town, but it is, needs a lot of work, and it's been going on for years. So let's hope that change will come in the future. Whether, whether this mayor runs for office again and decides not to run, or runs again, you still need to have power, you still need some power. You have nothing. Thank you. And thanks for the park and rec commission. I just can't imagine all those years and asking for all these things, and then just getting shot down all the time. This guy's gonna be really irrevocable. Thank you.
So, how?
Riley O'Connell, Etergen Road. I just want to start off by thanking the commission members, the most recent ones in the long term, the past couple of years, Jason, Mike, and Dave. The work you've done, I always say that work does not go unnoticed by the majority of the town. At least, I don't, I don't believe it does. And I think, unfortunately, it speaks volumes that just about every elected official that spoke tonight started off by thanking these gentlemen for the work, except for the mayor. And unfortunately, this is a situation where accountability is necessary. A way past it being necessary. And we talked about, I hear the councils are noticing about their days from up in this town. My days from this town were still more recent, but you can tell even that period of time, oh, nothing has changed, at least not for the better. Things have, things have only deteriorated. I think Council Marone is absolutely right in saying that it is a basic function of government, basic function and responsibility of municipal government to maintain, yes, your safety, your fire department, your police department, but also your parks. And so while I really appreciate the creativity that you all are trying to, some of you are trying to take up there in terms of taking this issue on the reins, in the same way that it's not, it's your own responsibility to let you know these issues, it's not necessarily your responsibility to administer or run this town administration. That falls on one person. I don't want to keep banging this drum, but one of the biggest issues our town is facing is just in the last 10 years, we've had a population decline of young families of 15%. That's 1 to 5% in 10 years. And it's only accelerating. And I'm not gonna say it's just the fact that our parks and our park and rec has deteriorated ways that, you know, were once super attractive to families, but certainly part of it. And I agree, to say that, to say that this is a tragic situation doesn't begin to capture the scope of how serious and sad the state of our town generally is, and it's unfortunately probably best represented and most apparent in the state of our parks. So I don't want to keep everyone even longer. I know, like I said, our commission members, our former commission members have already had to spend a long time here tonight to wait for this point. But I don't know where we go from here, other than we have to find a new way forward. Unfortunately, I think the only way forward at this point is to have new leaders. So thank you, councilors, your time.
I don't see any other takers from the public. Councilor Andrew.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to make another quick comment. So, you know, there's, there's only so much, and I'm not making excuses, but I do want to make an outline, you know, as part-time legislators up here, there's only so much that we can do. And, and we do, we do, a lot of us up here do a lot of reach-out. When we're walking around, we're downtown, we talk to people. When we're at social events, we talk to one another. I'm just gonna give you one example. You know, we, we can't forecast what's gonna happen next with a particular department, any more than the people that run those departments do. So this is why we do the best we can during budget time to ask public's questions, but I'm gonna pick up Public Works and Rob and Steve are gonna have to forgive me for it. I had, I, I did not, I do not have regular, regular engagement with any town department unless they reach out to me over something, or until a resident reaches out to me, and I have to get back to that department. Well, I had no idea that Public Works had five vacancies recently. And this is, this is a month-old dead data, and I'm using it to prove a point. They had five vacancies at the time, about a month ago. A couple of people that were out for different reasons, and a couple of people that were out on vacation. So that altogether is a catalyst for why a lot of work slows down and stops. But none of us are gonna know that. We're, we're not calling Rob up and saying, hey, can we get a status update on your department? So it's, it's hard. And this is why I made that comment about if the citizens can help. And I completely, I completely agree with Ms. Castreni. She's absolutely correct. There, there is a lot of times in this town that people dedicate their time over weeks, months, years, and decades, and see it all go nowhere. A lot of us have been there ourselves. We've done different things, and we, and we've watched things burn up and blow. And there's no excuse for it, but the buck stops right there. We can, we can add stuff to the budget, and it may not get spent. If it doesn't get spent, rolls over to rate and day fund, and that's where it sits. And then we get blamed for raising the taxes on the people. We, we need to come together and make sure that the things that we're asking for as a town, whether it's the pool, whether it's a skate park, whether it's an ice skating rink, whether or not the streets get swept more than three times and we wanted it four times, the catch bases get cleaned. Whatever it might be that the department doesn't already do, we've got to try to have, we can't, we can't legislate activity. That's the administration side. But bring it forward, we'll do what we can. But there, there's a give-take limit there. As much activity that we might spin up, it's gonna cost more. So that, that becomes a give-and-take. But again, we're gonna go back to, hey, there's ARPA funds right now. So if, if we've got ideas for the parks, there's still money in there. Whether it goes to Community Pool or a number of parks in town, I'm good. But, yeah, we can't just stick things in parks and hope people will use them. They have to come forward and say, I'd like to see this for my neighborhood park. Do we drop the ball up here? Sure. We can't be everywhere, all the time, for everyone. We do, we do the best we can. And, and I would just as much challenge the citizens as they would come up and challenge us, and they should, all right? If you think there's something we should be looking at, let us know. And then, and if you've got an idea how to approach it, I'm good with that, too. But if we don't know it's on somebody's front burner, we can't just start acting on it either. I, I, I have, I, I have a lot of passion for this town, too. But I, I will tell you that over the years, it's waned as well. I get older, I get set back myself, and I lose a little bit of that fire. So I appreciate the people that can be here at 15 minutes to midnight to remind us of where we should be. So I, I appreciate the people that have come up and spoken tonight, and I would like to encourage more people to come. I'm gonna thank the commission one more time for, for a job well done. And, and as some of the sentiments been up here, I hope if there's another way to bring this back or improve what the original setup that you guys would, would consider in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I see no more hands. Gentlemen, thank you for your time this evening, and thank you for your service to the town. All right, can I have a motion to go into executive session pursuant to CGS Section 1225-F and 1206B regarding strategy and negotiations with respect to pending tax appeal matters of 35, Core Baptist Associates versus Town Wallingford.
So moved in second, in all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council in executive session. Please clear the chambers. Please clear the chambers.